Forward City Council Committee on Finance will now be called for automatic.
Councilor Scudine?
Here.
Joseph Camaro?
Here.
Stephen Camaro?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi-Laboue?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
O'Vares?
Here.
President Panti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda tonight is, the committee on finance is going to be citizens' input. I want to remind everybody that's maybe new to the city council chamber or hasn't been here before or may have signed up for citizens' input, and all those who are here today, that we will entertain citizens' input at this time. There will be a three-minute time limit. I'm going to ask the community and those speaking not to call any councilors out by name. I'm going to ask that we try to do the best we can to stick to city business. In addition to that, I have to put everybody in the chamber here on notice that there will be zero tolerance for any outbursts. There will be any, I'm asking no clapping. I'm asking that this council chamber maintain its decorum while the council is in session. So there will be zero tolerance for anybody loud, obnoxious, screaming, yelling. We're going to maintain decorum in this chamber because we have city business to attend to. So consider that the only comment I hope to make on that this evening. First person to sign up to speak is Alfonso, I'm sorry, let's do the citations, Councilor Pelletier. Do your citations.
Yeah.
Just do that now.
Okay. It's my first day.
There you go, good job.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, a lot of times you, people see things in the city of Fall River, and it's bad, a bad accident, a bad fire, and sometimes people jump in, and sometimes people are scared to jump in. But we had an incident next to the cove. I'd like to bring Stephen Means up, and Clayton Tommy Wood up. Can you come on up? And the situation down there was, a car was going about 65 miles an hour, and hit a guardrail, handrail, took about 40 feet down, and then went up on a sidewalk, flipped over three times, hit five cars, and stood on the side. And they told me these two gentlemen were there, and being veterans, they actually knew what to do. They were in action. This young man went in, went to his car, got some blankets, got what he needed. This young gentleman went over, he was 75 years old?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, oh my God. So, so he comes up, and they don't forget, they're training, you know? He comes up and he goes to the back of the SUV?
Yes.
And how did you break the window?
My elbow.
Now there you go, put the elbow, crack the window. How many people did you bring out?
Oh, there was about...
Five or six, Steve.
Five.
All women?
All women. They were all together. And I was worried, concerned about a fire.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
And so, one girl, when I pulled her out, she was like full of oil, but at night she thought it was blood?
Oh, yeah.
And everything, and she was screaming at me and everything. I held her, and I tried to hold her so she wouldn't go into shock and everything. I told her that it was oil, I was trying to show her?
Yeah.
That my hands had the oil and everything. And she calmed down, and then Steve took her, and I went to the back, and we pulled out the others. I pulled one out by her legs and so forth, just any way I could get them out.
Well, let's go. You guys done a really, really good job, and I'm sure the girls were happy to see you.
Yeah.
They didn't have to wait for the rescue to come up. Did you have them all out of their car before they came?
Yes. They were, we had them all sitting down, we moved them off to the side there, because we, like I said, I was concerned, and Steve was also, that it might catch on fire in the car itself.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, so...
So we had six cars that got damaged.
We got them out of there and everything, and then the police came, the Fall River police came. But we had to, I told Steve when I seen it, I said, "Call 911." He called 911. When I seen the car going through the air, right Steve?
Yeah.
Like this, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
It was like watching reality TV.
No kidding.
Yep, yep.
It was, it was the real deal.
It was the real deal, yes.
Okay, well, for your efforts, we get you an official city citation. Not too many people get these unless you do something real good.
Well, thank you.
I mean, I never got one in my life, but I guess I don't do anything good, I don't know. That's it, I gotta do something good. Be resolved, the City Council hereby extends its combination to Stephen Means and Clayton Tom Wood, Tommy Wood, in recognition of heroic act in assisting the victims of motor vehicle accident on August 11, 2019. And this will be recorded in our city records.
Oh, thank you.
And you can post this up in your room.
Oh, sure.
Get a frame?
Yeah.
And...
Among my other...
That's it, so...
...trophies.
Mr. Panti signed this, and I sponsored it, and all my colleagues voted for this, so...
Oh, yeah.
We done our right.
Oh, thank you very much.
If we can get all the votes the same way, we're all set.
I, we, I wasn't even thinking when I did it, I was just trying to save the people, and I, it didn't...
Yeah, you want to say a few words besides that?
No, no.
How about you?
I'm saying enough as it is.
You want me to take these citations back, you gotta say a few words?
No, 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 I want it.
Okay, here's yours, who's Stephen?
I didn't, I didn't expect it, to be honest with you.
Well, you know, who's somebody watching and...
I never talked about it after that.
We never did.
And we never did.
Well, you're here, we appreciate your work in the service, and here in the city of Fall River. Congratulations. Go down the line, they're going to shake your hands, okay? Thank you.
Next order of business is going to be citizens' input. Thank you, Councilor. Next item on our agenda, citizens' input. First person to speak is Alfonso Hathaway, 541 Tecumseh Street, regarding city business. Three minutes.
How you guys doing? Number one, I know you guys are going to talk about the mayor tonight. My advice, can him. Number two, with his vehicles, I don't know if he ever sent you the logs of his vehicle, in which the citizens of Fall River pay for that, and we ask that he shall give the keys over and return it back to the citizens. And number three, when it comes down to this new system of government, it's a wrong idea. I think it should be one person from every neighborhood sitting where you guys are, and then have one management. That means only a management sitting there just with a stamp, just stamp and ribbon curtains, that's all. And if he does anything stupid like this mayor did, tan, fire him immediately. No ifs, buts about it. That's all I got to say, have a good one.
Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak is Dave Dennis and Sandy Dennis, 132 Highland Avenue, Hydrangea Project. You're going to speak for three minutes each. Good evening.
Evening. So you probably wondered what the shirts are about, you're not in Hawaii, not to be confused with Fall River. The reason we wanted to come down tonight is, some of you probably are aware that the Creative Arts Network has a project going on in the city called Hortensia, which my understanding is it's Portuguese for hydrangea. It's the planting of hydrangeas in and around the city. What we've done is, we've identified areas in the city that we are going to beautify. Essentially, the hydrangea project is a beautification project, if it's a connectivity project, and it's a cultural project. Sitting next to me is Dave La Lima, he's the one who approached the Creative Arts Network several months ago, asked us if we'd like to participate. After we listened to David, we were more than willing to assist in the project. David heads the Westport Trail Team, who has been very helpful. In fact, they were the group that, along with several Fall River residents, helped clean up around the carousel on the waterfront. If you've been down, if you haven't been down there, you should go down and see the job that was done clearing all the brush and everything down there. It's quite beautiful, it's probably one of the nicest views on the south coast. So I'm going to let Dave La Lima explain to you specifically what the hydrangea project is, what it encompasses, and a little bit of the history of the hydrangeas, its significance to Fall River, and what we're going to be doing here in the city. So, David?
Thank you. I know this is a strange time to be bringing this presentation.
Bring the mic to you.
But this is all about trying to help beautify the city, and to work on a civic project to give maybe some hope and some sense that there's some, some things changing in the city. How this started was, I was in the, I'm from Westport, and I went to the Azores several times, and the second time to the Azores, I was stunned in June with the plethora of hydrangeas everywhere. And I got in the plane on the way back, it sort of bothered me that there, in public places in a city as many Azoreans as there are in Fall River, there were no hydrangeas in public places, and it just didn't make any sense. I started poking around, and finally made a connection with David and Sandy, and the idea was to bring this flower to the city, a city that it's iconic in the Azores, and why not connect the culture of the Azores with the culture of the city in Fall River? So it had a lot of aspects to it, and I think has a lot of potential for civic pride, and ultimately possibly even economic development, because I think we could make this city, if, the reason I'm here today is to try to persuade the city council to name the hydrangea as the official flower of the city of Fall River. And if that can happen, then we can do other sorts of things. And I'll just briefly tell you what we've done to date. With the Peoples Incorporated, they donated about $2,100 to put hydrangeas around City Hall, which is myself, David, and other people, and I think it really was a game changer for how the City Hall looks. And we're going to take those hydrangeas out, we're going to put them in storage, because there are a certain kind of hydrangea called microphylla, the same hydrangeas that are in the Azores, but they're sensitive to cold weather. So we're going to put them in storage, and put them back in front of City Hall every year. That's what's going to happen in front of City Hall. And by the way, there is no budget, this is hard to imagine, there is no budget in City Hall for plantings around City Hall. This is kind of hard to believe. So I hope maybe at some point, maybe somebody can look into why there's no funding for plants around City Hall. We're now working on Battleship Cove, but the idea here is to do this all over the city. This is not a downtown initiative. This is initiative to go around the city, find public places, and bring hydrangeas. And I think if it can happen at some point, and I'll leave with this vision, if you drive from the Braga Bridge towards the Cape, the idea, hopefully, the next, and we've negotiated with the state, and possibly we're going to get approval to put hydrangeas in Exit Six and Exit Seven, and some hydrangeas, we're talking about now putting hydrangeas on the hillside, between the Chamber of Commerce and 195, and up the hill. Just imagine, if you will, 500...
Fifteen seconds.
300 hydrangeas on that hill when you're driving through the city. Somebody will be thinking, something's going on here, something positive. That's the hydrangea project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just wanted to say thank you to you for all the work on this. It's really a noticeable difference, and it looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank the media for coming out tonight, by the way. I didn't realize the hydrangea project was going to generate so much interest here.
Councilor in seat two.
Appreciate you being here. And by the way, if any group or organization or company would like to donate some money and plant some hydrangeas, we'll certainly recognize them with plaques, we'd appreciate it. We're easy to find, Creative Arts Network.
Councilor in seat two, Councilor Camaro?
Just a question, hydrangeas are perennials, why wouldn't you just put hydrangeas that all you have to do is cut them back at the end of the year?
I'm sorry.
Hydrangeas are perennials, why would you need to take them out and bring them back? Why don't you just...
Because the hydrangea in the Azores is a macrophylla, and the macrophylla grows on the dead wood, and it starts...
No, no, I understand that, but why don't you reuse some normal hydrangeas that are perennials, if we don't have to do all of that work?
Well, we had that debate, and we thought it was important to mirror up the plant...
I, I'm just throwing it out there, we're not going to have that discussion tonight, but I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person to sign up to speak is David De Lima, 418 Drift Road, Westport. Is there a motion to waive the rules?
That was Mr. De Lima.
Motion to waive the rules has been...
That was Mr. De Lima that just spoke.
Oh, okay, I apologize, never mind. John Vasconcellos, 946 Old Warren. Or 746 Old Warren, that's in Swansea. Is there a motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by...
Second.
Councilor Stephen Camaro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Vasconcellos? Wait, if you could sit, Mr. Vasconcellos, please? Okay.
John Vasconcellos, 746 Old Warren, 126 Mass. I know there's something going on with maybe Mayor Correa, that all these guys going to vote on, throw him out of the office, and have the president become the mayor, when it's wrong. A lot of people did worse than him, in this city, as a mayor, as a mayor. But because you guys against the mayor, all right, because he speaks two languages, he's the youngest mayor in Massachusetts, this too, and number three, he's doing a good job, better job than any of yous in the front of me that I agree about. I don't know, I don't know why, what reason, to throw a mayor out of the office, and he got arrested a day before, a day after. He was on the news talking what he's going to do, and everything about the city of Fall River. People scared against the mayor. The mayor's not doing nothing wrong. The people is behind him, just like people in the front of me, even in the back of me, is snapping him on the back, or wants his job back, or wants his job back very bad, because he's doing a good job, the better job than anybody else. Now, they're black and male, I ain't got no idea, do you know? Has any of yous got a proof what he's done until now? One thing, if he did that, he'd be in jail by now. If he did one thing, he'd be on jail right now. There's no proof. It's one-on-one conversation, people. It's one and one, okay? There's no witnesses. If there was witnesses, you'd be in jail. Okay? This is like the mayor from Providence, Viancy, did a good job as a mayor, went to jail, got out of jail, he became a mayor. He passed away because of other things, but he became a mayor, because he was doing a good job.
Fifteen seconds.
There's nothing against, there's nothing that the people in Fall River approach to me and tell me the mayor's doing a good job. And that's three opinions that I gave you guys in the beginning, that's good against the mayor, Correa.
Your time is up, Mr. Vasconcellos, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next person to sign up to speak is Antonio Texera of 887 Cherry Street, Fall River.
Oh, I'm sorry, I broke the holder.
Just put it right down there, we'll take care of it, thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Texera? Welcome.
Thank you, Councilor, for the opportunity to tell you that I, as well as many Fall River residents, are deeply disturbed by the politics in our city, and I can't help but appear before you, and ask you to unanimously approve the temporary removal of our mayor. I know that is asking too much, because some of you, for one motive or another, continue to protect a mayor who has been indicted, not once, but twice, in a few months. And for that, I say, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Judge Macy has publicly stated that Section 38 of our Charter, where it states, and I quote, "Whenever by reason of sickness or other causes the mayor is unable to perform the duties of the office, the president of the city council shall be acting mayor," end of quote. With all due respect that Judge Macy deserves, I totally disagree with him when he stated that cause is too vague to act on it. How many causes do we have to specify? One? 1,000? Being indicted twice in a few months is not enough? He also questioned another passage of Section 38, and I shall quote again, "By the affirmative vote of seven members shall determine whether the mayor is unable to perform the duties of the office." Again, I disagree with Judge Macy when he questions the mayor can or cannot perform his duties. The mayor currently has too many, too much in his plate, too many distractions, and I mean really heavy distractions, to be able to concentrate on his duties as mayor of Fall River. Besides that, Judge Macy is being paid by the city to protect the residents' interests, and this interpretation of Section 38 sounds more like protecting his generous salary given by the mayor Jaziel, than I would like to hear from independent voice rather than the Judge Macy. Councilors, all nine of you, do your job, and suspend Mayor Correa of his duties on a temporary basis, or until his name is clear of any criminal activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak is Michael Murphy, 40 Winchester Lane, number 10, regarding mayor's support.
See, we got a lot of different opinions on this matter. This is my first time doing something like this, I'm usually the one on the couch watching it and hearing about it the next day. I definitely wanted to come out and definitely share my thoughts.
Bring the mic closer to your mic.
I wanted to come out and share my thoughts about what I think about this, and other people that I am around, and this has definitely brought a cloud on the city with the mayor, but this is old business. He was, we had a recall election back in March, where the majority of the people decided, you know, we know what's going on, we know it's some ugly business, but we still supported him, and gave him the trust to continue his job. A lot of people, you know, they just talk about the little purple trash bag, and that that was a gimmick. He's done far more than the trash bag for the city of Fall River. And I just think that it's wrong the way this is, that you're going about it. I mean, the person that's sitting up here that initiated this paperwork wants his job. Under the 14th Amendment, you're innocent until proven guilty. He should be able to have his day in court, just like any one of us would. I mean, we voted for him, not just once, but twice, and just like we vote for you, we vote for each, we vote for you people, and to just go and try to remove him for something that he didn't even have a day in court on is just wrong. And I just, I want my opinion, that's my opinion, and anybody that, pretty much I talk to, and I just wanted that known, to think about it before you go ahead and do that vote tonight. I hope that you'll think about, if it were one of you that were in his position. That's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
Next person to sign up to speak is John Sinarra of 651 Valentine Street, regarding city affairs.
Thank you. I'm here today to ask the City Council to do its job and unanimously vote to remove this cancer out of the city of Fall River. No excuses. If there's a legal question, let the courts decide. If you support the mayor at this point, you're just like him. And your credibility will be questioned. I assure you that in November, every vote in this city will be reminded of your vote here today. I voted for Jaziel for the City Council and for the first time he ran for mayor. I expected great things from him. Needless to say, I'm totally disappointed. The city needs to move forward, and this council needs to show its citizens that you can be trusted. I would also ask the City Council to consider an ethics office to conduct employee training and awareness of unethical conduct within the city government. This office would also manage a hotline where city employees can report suspected abuse to be investigated and reported to the City Council. I work for a large corporation, and every three months, every manager in the company is required to have a values in action meeting with their employees where they're presented with various questionable work-related scenarios and discuss what needs to be done. Usually the question, the answer is no, report it to HR or higher management. That's what the city needs. The City Council must also invite the state Attorney General to come in and conduct a full investigation of any ethics violations that may have occurred in our city. The City Council must also look at any business who has found to have been paid, to have paid a bribe to anyone in the city to conduct business in the city. In my opinion, any person that paid a bribe is as guilty as the person that accepted the bribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the mayor and a loan appropriation order of $6,088,821 for the Resiliency Prep Academy repairs, which was referred to the committee on August 12, 2019. And just for those who are here, may be new to the council, we won't be discussing the mayor's item until full council, which would be after 7:00 PM this afternoon, this evening, rather, just so everybody's aware of that. We have some items before the Committee on Finance. That will be before us right now. So at this point, again, the loan order of $6,088,821 for the Resiliency Preparatory Academy repairs. It was referred to the Committee on Finance on 8/12. Any questions for the administration? If not, it would be appropriate to refer that item to full council for action.
Can you refer?
Motion to refer the item to full council for action has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it? Next item is a mayor and a loan order of $1,704,637 for the Westall School Repair Project. That was referred to this committee on August 12. Is there any questions for the administration? Motion to refer this item to full council for action has been made by Councilor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it? Next item is a resolution to discuss with the city engineer the workmanship of the Streetscapes Project at the East Main Street... Streetscapes Project. That resolution was referred to this committee on July 15, 2019. Discussion? City administration, please. Mrs. Sahadi, if the engineer is here, as well as the city planner, please join us back at the table. Recognized counselor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say at the last meeting, I'm a little rough on you guys, to be honest with you. But, you know, when you see what's going on there, you see the money that we spent here in the city of Fall River, and you see the other streets that are nice, no lumps, no nothing, nice and even, all over the place. And you go to East Main Street, it's all dug up, 20 patches, supposed to be a new street. I can't sit there and say, this is a perfect street. I can't sit there and say to the people, this is a good job. My job is to see what happened and what can we do to rectify the situation. That's it. So I know you went back, I think to Mr. Bisco, and I also asked you to make sure that any monies that they were supposed to get back, that you held them. Did you hold the monies back?
We retain monies of a certain amount that we believe is sufficient to handle what we can enforce under the contract. In other words, additional roadwork to rectify the objectionable nature of the paving.
Have you talked to Mr. Bisco yourself?
I've not talked to him personally. I sent him a letter, and he responded. I'm going to set up a meeting with him for this week.
What's the feeling? Is he gonna give us a new street or a street that is acceptable to us?
If he is unwilling or unable to move forward on his own, we will, we have legal authority, and we already have a quote from another contractor to make repairs to the street that are in the city's best interest. And it, and those, and that quote is less than the amount that we've retained.
What do you mean, that quote is less? Who's paying? Him?
It would come out of money that would otherwise have been paid for his pavement work.
You already owe him about 60 grand.
It's retainage against that pavement, yes.
Yeah, but you can't fix that for 60,000, can you? You're the engineer. How long I'm asking you?
We have a quote from a contractor that would make significant pavement repairs, primarily at the intersections, that would, that I believe will rectify the objectionable nature of the appearance of the street.
Well, how soon will we see a plan to fix it up and come to a resolution that's gonna get done? And this has been going on for a while. There hasn't been much movement up there except for Globe Street. They dug all that up. And whose responsibility was that? Is that for the lights?
That's for the signalization of the intersection, correct.
Is that part of his contract?
That was not part of Bisco's contract. That it was, at one point, we were planning on awarding that under the same construction contract, but we were advised that the scope was too far outside of what was originally approved. And so we bid that separately, and that work is being done by a separate contractor.
All right. What can you tell me? How long will it take to rectify the situation? To put the lights up and complete the job that is acceptable to you and City Councilors?
I'll have an answer from Mike Bisco this week as to whether he will be able to perform the work. If he is unable to perform the work, then we will move forward with another contractor that we already have a quote from. That work would be done, I believe, in October. And subsequent to that work in October, we would also get the striping completed for the entire street, which hasn't been done yet. And the signalization will be completed, I believe, within the next three weeks. The traffic, that's the traffic signalization. There are also streetlights. The streetlight poles are on order. And the delivery date for the streetlight poles is in November.
Is it getting too late to do the street? You guys done it last year, what?
No, it is not too late to do the street.
It's not too late?
No. Plants will be open through, into December, at least.
All right, well, you know, we're supposed to be making headway. I think we're gonna make some headway. But it's been about three weeks, and you really haven't sat down with Bisco. I guess he's not too happy that he may have to rectify the situation. Do you know if he's willing to do it? Or is he forced to do it?
I can direct him to do it under the contract, but as he's not mobilized to the site, he may refuse to mobilize to the site.
What's our recourse?
Our recourse is to have another contractor do it and utilize those monies that we've retained.
Counsel, if I could just add, so the contractual obligation for us at this juncture, which as a result of the last City Council meeting, the contractor has to be put on notice that the work that's been performed is not satisfactory and acceptable to the city. So that notice has been delivered to him. So we've met that obligation. He has since responded that, and there clearly is some disagreement as to the acceptability of that work. So once Mr. Frye has the meeting with Mr. Bisco, then the city is free to proceed and take whatever course of action we deem is necessary to complete the project. So we are making progress, but we did have to do the contractual notifications prior to initiating the corrective work. He has to be given the opportunity to do the corrective work since it's his retainage that's gonna be used to pay for that work. And we have met that obligation. And so consequently, after a meeting, we'll be able to move forward.
So no work will be done until we get to see the plan? Or it's just go in front of you, and you're gonna do what you have to do?
I'll be in touch and make sure that what we're proposing is acceptable to the council.
Okay, well, like I said, been working on this a while.
Yep.
You know what it is. The people knows what it is. And we have to come up and have it all squared away to the best of their abilities that is satisfactory to us and my colleagues as well.
Understood and agreed.
Okay. So as soon as you get that, let us know. Let's get it done. And it'd be fast sailing on East Main Street.
I hope so.
I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat six, Councilor Long.
Was this, was this work bonded?
Yes, that would be an alternative approach, but it would be challenged, and...
Always is.
What's that?
Always is. Bonds are usually challenged. So my question is, if you bring in another contractor to complete this job?
Correct.
What effect does that have on any guarantees, warranties by the initial contractor? And what is the effect on the bond from the initial contractor?
The, any work that was done by another contractor would have specific limits delineated. And so work within those limits would be the responsibility of the contractor that was brought in. And then work that is outside of those limits would remain the responsibility of Bisco contracting. With that said, there's a significant portion of the work that is already approaching its one-year guarantee period.
That just amazes me. I don't... You're saying we haven't completed the work because we've been in discussion about all these other cuts?
Understood.
So Bisco's work has already passed its one-year guarantee? We really haven't even...
It's not past it. It's approaching it.
Yeah, but we haven't really seriously finished the project, and therefore, the finished project has not been put to use. How could he be already out of his one-year guarantee? That's crazy.
Because he completed the work that was approved under his contract roughly November, December.
Well, if you think that that's confusing, when you start saying you're gonna bring another contractor in here, and it's gonna be delineated between whoever did the work, really? That's, that will be, you wanna talk about a fight, that wasn't me, it was him, that wasn't him, it was him, it was... It's gonna be absolutely insane.
Obviously, it's not an ideal situation, Mr. Long.
No, obviously, it's not an ideal situation. The ideal situation is to have Bisco finish the job.
Agreed. And that's what we're gonna approach him with and try and work it out.
Then, then, then go for the bond. That's what I would do. I wouldn't bring somebody else in to finish it because once you do that, you're gonna throw this into a tailspin, if you ask me. It'll just be a mess. Because Bisco will say anything you tell him, I never touched it, he did. And who's gonna be the person that's there 100% of the time saying, oh, we never touched it, I did touch it, or didn't he touch it? That doesn't make any sense to me. But, I mean, you're sitting here talking to me, and I'm just sitting here, my head is spinning, literally spinning. Because I'm not following any logic in what's going on here. And if somebody could try to help me understand that, because it doesn't seem logical to me. Bisco has the job. Bisco finishes the job. If he doesn't finish the job, his warranties come in play. If his warranties don't come in play, his bonds come in play. Simple. We say, oh, no, no, we're gonna bring somebody else in, and we're gonna call back money from him. He's not gonna get full payment for the job. That just, that, it just doesn't sound right to me. I don't know. Help me out on this. If anybody can help me out on this, that'd be good.
Well, from that piece, the contract in Massachusetts law is fairly clear that a portion of the retainage may be utilized to complete work that is either unsatisfactory or was left incomplete by the contractor that was contracted to do the work. And the reason that we would utilize that method as opposed to going to the bond is because we actually have the money. We control those funds. And so it's an issue of timeliness in moving the project forward to completion quickly as opposed to going through the process of utilizing that bond to complete the work, to complete similar work in, to achieve the satisfactory result that we all want to see.
Now, Mr. Bisco does quite a bit of work for the city, in the city, and surrounding communities. With this issue, if you bring another contractor in, does that affect his state bidding list or any of that type of stuff? Or does it affect any other contracts that are not gonna be allowed to continue because of not completing this one?
I don't believe that there would be a... If it were to come to a separate contract, then it would be handled under that separate contract. If the city determined that moving forward with Mr. Bisco on future contracts was inadvisable, and that isn't a determination that we've made at this point, but if that was the determination, then we'd have to collect our justification for that. And if he was the low bidder on another construction project, then at that time, we would have that backup available, and we would present it to the Attorney General at, once that, it was time to award a future construction project.
Counsel, I think it's also important to know that...
I have no idea what he just said, so I just... Just to tell you, I have no idea what he just said, no.
Okay. Well, just to add a different element to all of this, the work that is in question, that we concur, is poor workmanship. It was actually done by a subcontractor of Mr. Bisco. So relative to the quality of the work and that issue, clearly, the subcontractor for the work is clearly at fault as we see it right now. So regarding, you know, how this might affect Mr. Bisco, again, there is, there is some distinction because he didn't actually perform the work. His subcontractor did.
But he's responsible for the work of his subcontractor?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's part of the disagreement. But as far as the city's concerned, as Mr. Frye has said, we want a quality product, and we have money retained for the purposes of doing the necessary corrective work. And that is, that is our strategy. I would add that regarding Mr. Bisco, we certainly would document any problems that we might have regarding resolution to this. We ourselves have called for references when we've been preparing to award work. And we would certainly be in a position to comment on the quality of that work should another community contact us regarding these activities. Again, we're hopeful that that, it doesn't reach that stage. But again, we have, to your point, there are other avenues that we can pursue that hopefully will suggest to the contractor that we get the corrective action taken care of. of, and that we end up with a quality product that both he and the city can be proud of.
All I'm saying is, is at this point, is I know Mr. Bisco, I'm not gonna say we're like best of friends, but I know him, 'cause he's been in the city a long, long time, and he's got a great reputation for what he does, and I'm sure he's very concerned about that. And I think the best avenue to go is to stick with him and make sure he completes it to the best of his ability. To all of a sudden now add a second contractor, it's, it just, it just, it really just muddies the water. And I would think, you know, cooler heads will prevail at the end of this, and hopefully the thing gets done. But, because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if a contractor comes in, doesn't finish the job, and it's a workmanship issue and that type of stuff, then that automatically, it's not whether we want to or we don't want to, automatically gets referred to the Attorney General, and they go on, echoes on their, their resume, so to speak, and could affect their ability to bid state jobs or bid any other jobs. And I think that's where we're going with this, so I don't understand where this second contractor came in at this point.
Well, again, Counsel, that's not our preferred alternative. I, I think the preferred course is for Mr. Bisco to simply come back and, and take care of the corrective work, but that's his choice. If he chooses not to do that, the city is prepared to act and, again, achieve the quality that we all expect.
I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. Mrs. Bavaris, when was Mr. Bisco put on notice? You had said he had to be officially put on notice.
The letter was dated the ninth, yesterday.
We just put him on notice yesterday.
I had, I had originally written a draft letter that was circulated on August 28th, and it was reviewed and discussed internally in the administration, and I was able to get that out yesterday.
So this matter was before this counsel on August 12th. We received copies, and Mr. Bisco sent us an email late this afternoon, I'm not sure if anyone saw it. It was sent to us from the city clerk. He emailed, and we spoke about this at the August 12th meeting, on the first of August, and again, on the sixth of August, asking a detailed list. Prior to our meeting, please send in writing the following: All issues that the city has found since you agree the project was 100% complete and accepted. Number two, how each issue does not meet project specifications. Number three, for each issue, please provide what the city expects the repair solution to be. Number four, historically in the city of Fall River, the city engineer has had authority to accept and close out public work projects, is this still the case? Number five, any other items that will be on Tuesday's agenda? That was prior to the 12th. He didn't receive an answer to that. He didn't come to that meeting, 'cause he didn't have any answers for it. We received a copy of an email again today, and the very last paragraph says... Hold on. Once again, as it was last month, it is premature for any representative to appear before the city council. I am still not aware of the true nature or scope of the issues that has caused them to request my appearances. As noted above your letter, which simply states that all of the pavement is defective, does not adequately identify the reported problems in the city council chambers, is not the appropriate form to hash these issues out. How come he hasn't received an answer to his questions?
Well, it would have, one of the reasons that we did not answer him before the prior council meeting is that we wanted to make sure that we were addressing, in any notice that we were providing him, that we were addressing each and every issue that the city council has an issue with. So we wanted to be able to go back to him with a complete list.
I understand that, but that meeting was August 12th. It's September 10th. He sent this email today. Despite several requests, copies are attached, you have still not identified which portion or portions of the specification the pavement does not meet. You have also not identified how the infrared repair was not done properly, or how is not consistent. Furthermore, there's no indication that any of the areas have failed. Why aren't we meeting with him? We sent him a notice today.
Counsel, we tried to meet with Mr. Bisco. He was invited to attend meetings for the sole purpose of discussing all of this, and he refused to attend.
The council meeting?
No.
And, and...
Engineering meeting.
Separate meetings with engineering.
Because he said he wanted to have all of the information brought with him, which is, I don't know, Mr. Bisco, but if he's asking for a list of items, why wouldn't we give it to him?
Again, Counselor, we felt it would be far more productive to have an in-person meeting, either at the job site, so we could physically review and inspect the work.
So you have asked him to meet at the job site, or?
To have a meeting, yes, and he's declined.
When, when was that asked?
We asked for that prior to the August, prior to the August council meeting.
And he declined, and then that, his, as part of his declining, he sent this list of questions, but the city has not answered that.
Correct. And so, in terms of moving forward, where we're at now is we'll be able to, I believe we'll be able to meet with Mr. Bisco, members of the council, should they be available for such a meeting, and we can specifically discuss...
Have you asked him for another meeting? I know you've sent the letter that put him on notice, but have you asked him for another meeting?
I have not spoken with him today, no.
Could you please respond to this email and send the list of items that he's asked for? It's, it's September 10th, how long is this gonna go on? We're gonna have the same conversation next month?
Counsel, I don't think it's, it's improper for the city personnel to request an in-person meeting with the contractor.
It's not, but if, if the contractor is asking for information, so he can be...
He's telling us...
Excuse me, if he's asking for information, so he can be prepared, then give it to him.
But Counsel, there's no way the things he has asked is gonna completely address the problems that we have with the site.
You can't answer what he's asked?
We can go back and forth, we could certainly exchange emails and go back and forth for days and weeks.
Just answer the questions that he's asked, and if you have additional questions, then ask him an in-person meeting, but give him a heads up and set the meeting. This is crazy. I yield.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I go into any questions, can, can somebody refresh my memory with regards to the committee passing a motion at the last meeting to refer it to full counsel, that all future streetscape works that have not been completed, that the bond authorization be rescinded?
Madam Clerk?
Was that, was that objected to at full counsel?
That was part of the quarterly budget update.
And that was...
That's on tonight's agenda.
It's on tonight's agenda?
On the regular meeting, yes, Counselor.
Oh, so that's where we have a list, so that's why we don't see a table to action or...
Right, that's item number two.
All right. Just, just for the folks at the table, I, I know people took exception to the last council meeting when you folks felt like you were getting a barrage of questions from the council, and that the council was maybe a little bit out of line. I tend to disagree with that, and again, we are here before the council, and we've got no new information, right? So we're, we're hearing, number one, that you want the city council to go out on East Main Street, toward the street, see where all the imperfections are in the roads, and give recommendations to the city, to the, to the administration. I don't know that there's any member that's a licensed engineer that sits on this.
Certain counselors have expressed an interest, and I, and I invite them to join us.
Right, but, but let me just finish, 'cause I don't think there's a certified engineer on this, that sits on this council, that even, that's even qualified to, to walk the roadway or the sidewalk, to make any type of determination as to whether or not the infrastructure that was put down, the material that was put down, how it was put down, the quality of the material was put down, that we could give you any type of educated response. That's, that's for you folks to, to determine and, and make that determination going forward.
And we're happy to do that.
Okay, but when, when's that gonna happen? Are we gonna wait for the next council meeting to tell us that you just sent out a letter a day before the council meeting? Or are you actually gonna do that soon? I mean, we're, as you had mentioned to one of the councils, that we're almost a year into this project. This isn't the first time it's been brought up. These have been conversations that have been had for at least three months now. We haven't gotten any new type of responses, so I'm not quite sure what we're waiting for. I agree with Counselor in, in seat five, that, you know, the information should be provided to Mr. Bisco in advance. You folks should be doing some, some site meetings, walking the, the site and coming up with, highlighting at least through some type of documentation, pictures or whatever the case may be, where the imperfections are. The other, the other concern I have is, is that you, the $60,000 in retainage, for you to suggest that that's enough work to, to fix the roadway, would highly suggest to me that that's not gonna meet the expectations of, of Counselor in seat seven. 'Cause I think what Counselor in seat seven is looking for is probably a mill and overlay at this point, because we have put aside roughly $1.4 million for this, this project in itself, and I think the patchwork doesn't make sense, and I, and I agree with them. I, I think we should hold the contractors accountable for the workmanship that they provide, and I appreciate Mr. Bisco does a, a lot of work in the city, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be highlighting any shady workmanship or, you know, quality of work that's not meeting our expectation. So with that, my question is, is that we've essentially bonded $1.4 million for the East Main projects. Mr. Bisco was the GC on that?
Correct.
So he received the entire $1.4 million, or they're close to?
Yes.
So in terms, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a $2 million project, right? My 1.4 is, is Purchase Street, so let me take a step back and clarify for everybody. So East Main was $2 million?
East Main was $2 million of bonded streetscape money, and there was additional work for the water main installation.
Of the $2 million, what was the contract price that was awarded to Mr. Bisco as the GC for that project?
I believe that amount was 1 point, it was 1 million, and then he did additional work in the contract for approximately $400,000. And then, about $400,000, that was new work, and then there was about $200,000 that was unforeseen work that he completed. And then separately, there is a separate contract for the streetlights, and that is $270,000, and that is not, that is not due Mr. Bisco.
Okay, so we're close to $1.8 million going to Mr. Bisco based on all this stuff, and that was just quick math in my head, I could be off a little bit, but $1.8 million. What was his total retainage?
His total original retainage would have been 5% of that.
Which is what?
I wanna say about $90,000.
So...
It was $90,000, and there was additional retainage for the water work, but $90,000 on the streetscape work.
So essentially, we've released $30,000 in retainage back to Mr. Bisco when we're not satisfied with the roadwork?
That is true, yeah.
Why would we do that?
Because the scope of what we had intended, the scope of work originally contemplated that required additional repair costs less than the $60,000 that we've, that we've continued to retain.
But you're not answering my question. So we had a total retainage of $90,000, somewhere along the line, based on the progress of the project being completed?
Yep.
The review of the project and the quality and the workmanship of the project, somewhere along the line, internally, the administration made a determination to essentially give back or release 1/3 of the retainage?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we were satisfied with the fact that the workmanship was completed to the standards that we've identified?
What we identified was the cost that we believed would be, the, the amount of money that would be necessary to make the repairs within a certain scope of work that we had identified as requiring repair, and we retained sufficient monies to complete that work if necessary by another, by a third party.
Okay, so when, when did we release the $30,000? Was, was the final course down on the street?
Yes.
When we, when we released the $30,000?
Yes.
Okay, so we knew there was imperfections and things to the, the, the workmanship did not rise to the level of the, the work that we've expected.
It wasn't completely apparent immediately. Some of this took some time to develop as a result of some weathering and actual use of the street that resulted in more evident failures in the seams where they had laid the asphalt down, and in some of the quality of, of the asphalt as it, as it was, had been placed.
So in terms of the subcontractor, was it a file subbid, or was it a contractor that Mr. Bisco?
It was a contractor Mr. Bisco selected.
Okay, so he wasn't forced to deal with the subcontractor that was hired?
Correct.
Okay, so I think the conversation about who the sub is is really a moot point, and I think it's just muddying the waters. But I will go back to the fact that I'm not quite sure why we released the $30,000. So Mr. Bisco has issued a letter to us, basically saying that the administration has stated that the, the work that was completed was 100% satisfactory. And I don't have the letter in front of me, but I believe Counselor in seat five had mentioned that. Is there any truth to that?
We've never formally accepted any of the work. We've never issued a letter of acceptance.
Did we informally accept the roadwork?
What we did was we, we accepted that he had placed pavement that met certain specifications, but the workmanship itself led to failures in that pavement, and the workmanship tooks, it took some time for those failures to develop and demonstrate that the workmanship was unacceptable.
Okay, so who, on the city side, or even if, if it's a third-party vendor, who was conducting all the inspections for this project?
Beta.
Beta?
Yes.
And so they have a report that everything was satisfactory based on what they've experienced, so they...
They documented the tonnage, they documented the, the temperatures, they documented, and they would have documented any issues that arose during the actual installation.
And at no point did Beta highlight any of the imperfections or, you know, lack of quality workmanship that we're, we're seeing now to the administration?
There wasn't direct mention made of issues during the paving until after the fact, when the city went back to Beta and asked them about, you know, what's going on with the seams, why are there issues here, and that we found out that there had been some problems with equipment, and some other issues that the subcontractor dealt with while they were on site, and, and a portion of that led to some of the workmanship issues that we were trying to address with, with these repairs.
So you said there were no direct conversations. Were there indirect conversations about that?
To, with, with Bisco?
With, with Bisco and Beta? I mean, you said that there was no intern, no direct conversations about the quality of the workmanship that was being performed.
There were several conversations about the quality, and when we approached them originally...
Was that, can I just interrupt? Was that before or after you released the $30,000 in retainage?
It would have been around the, the time that we were releasing the, the retainage, and he was requesting all of it, and I was attempting to be very fair to Mr. Bisco and only retain such monies as would be required to complete the work.
All right. In terms of the draft letter that you said you had reviewed internally, who, who internally was reviewing that draft?
I reviewed the letter, as well as Bleve Corporation Council reviewed the letter? Yes.
What, what was the issues with the letter? I mean, how long does it, you draft, when did you, when'd you say you drafted the letter?
Originally drafted it August 28th.
Okay, so...
I, around that time, I was out on bereavement as well, which is a separate situation.
Okay, but it was, it was, there was a draft that could have been issued, right? And I don't think, and if you're out on bereavement, I would, I would think that, you know, work doesn't stop in the, in the office, so we have a copy of the letter. The letter and notification should have gone out to Mr. Bisco, right? I think we can all agree on that. So, I mean, moving forward, I'm more interested in the fact that this is, number one, 2-point million, $2 million, we've got a $1.4 million project on Purchase Street, which has also been an utter debacle and has cost us more money. I'm looking forward to having a conversation in full counsel to really rescind the bond authorization for all the future streetscape work that has not taken place, and to the fact that our Chapter 90 money, which I, I mentioned before, our yearly Chapter 90 monies is, is roughly 1 point...
1.9 million.
1.9 million, right? So we've got two projects right now that equate to our annual funding from the state to do the roadwork that we have throughout the entire city. So we could have taken that money, we could have, we could have appropriated it for other roadwork projects, and I think that's something that we should consider, 'cause when you start driving down all our roads, whether it's, you know, the Seven Hills, you go to the South End, I believe, Mr. President, you mentioned Stafford Road, you can find, I, you know, I think the easier, the easier quest would be to challenge everybody to find me 50 streets in the city. me 50 streets in the city that they would really drive on that have no major issues, and I think that in itself is going to be a challenge and a task, and I'm not saying that that all has to do is, is a result of internal situations that we have. I know that we've got the gas company and the electric company going out doing a lot of roadway projects, and, and they're not maintaining and holding, we're not holding them to the standards that they should be held to when it comes to the ordinances that are in our books for roadway projects. But again, I, I think this money was wasted. I do not see the economic development that was promised to us in either locations, and I, I think from, from my standpoint as, as a city council, we are elected to make sure that we are holding everybody accountable, and I, I really don't see that this money is being well-spent and should not continue to go forward with projects that I feel have been failures. So with that, I will yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Anything further? Councilor in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
Just a couple of questions. One, on this issue of taking the money that was bonded for the streetscape projects and then using it for other construction, is that an allowable use of the bonded money?
I'm sorry, I'm, we're only...
I think there's probably a question more for Ms. Sahadi or...
Certainly. The specific bond authorization or loan authorization that this council voted on names the streets in there. Those would not be able to be reallocated to other street projects. If a project has not begun and has not been utilized, the loan authorization could be from the administration brought down and asked for rescinding, assuming this council would rescind that order. They could then, upon the administration bringing down another loan order for miscellaneous streets or naming specific streets like Stafford Road for an example, then you would vote another bond authorization. But you cannot just take the monies from one bond authorization that are specifically named to another one, even if it's a like-kind project, because it is, the project hasn't started. The like-kind project that we've talked about is when there's monies left at the end of a project, and it's minimal, insignificant, monies can be transferred at that point, it's already been bonded, to another like-kind project, and we've done that in this council multiple times with projects we've come down and, and asked for transfers.
So in answer to the question as to whether or not the bonded money for these streetscape projects can be rescinded and, and put into other street and sidewalk construction is no. It can't be. It's bonded for that particular purpose, and this council voted for that purpose, and now for us to somehow think that by a stroke of emotion and a decision that we can reverse that is, is just not reality. The only, only other question I have...
Councilor in seat one, your point of information?
I like a response on the reality. I just heard that that's exactly what we can do.
Mm-hmm.
How, how is rescinding, can we rescind the bond authorization?
Only if we bring it down and ask you to do it. So the administration would have to put a, put a, rescind, to an order in front of you to rescind a loan authorization as we put a order in front of you to create a loan authorization.
And where, where is that language found?
Chairman, do I have the floor?
Yeah, he's asking for the point of information. I'll allow the question.
I asked bond, bond counsel what the procedure would be to rescind a loan authorization. In this particular instance, we have not even bonded for some of these projects. You have just authorized the project themselves.
Councilor in seat three?
Thank you. And, and the only other question I have is, you know, I, I think there's blame to be put for particularly the East Main Street project, and I had initially submitted long ago, well over a year ago, it may even be approaching two years ago, a, a request that there be an oversight committee for each of these streetscape projects. East Main Street has had no oversight committee. Is that true? Is any oversight committee established for East Main Street? And I believe the appointing authorities were the mayor and the city council president. So did either of them make appointments to an oversight committee for East Main Street?
No, there was no formal oversight committee for those two projects.
Okay, in spite of the fact that the city council voted unanimously to have a 10-person, as I recall, it was a 10-person oversight committee with particular numbers of people and including the town, city planner, including the city engineer as two of those eight members, and the other members were going to be appointed to represent stakeholders, property owners on the street in the neighborhood. None was, had, so I think as we, and I commend my colleague in, in seat seven for, for putting his heels in, but he and I have served as oversight committee members on the Purchase Street project, and he and I have been appointed to serve as oversight members for the Befford Street project. Had there been an oversight committee on East Main Street, and had it been insisted upon to have that oversight committee, I think we might have been able to avoid some of these things, because there would be people on the ground saying, "This needs to be done." As many may remember, and we'll be talking about Purchase Street, and I, you know, we on Purchase Street did cause a little bit of an uproar on Caribing, and this, and the, and the Preservation Society was solicited to join us, join in on that request, and we were able to make some changes that were, that were faulty, that the workmanship was faulty, and because we had an oversight committee on site, we were able to make some changes. The failure of what's happened on East Main Street is largely the result of dropping the ball and not implementing the council's unanimously adopted resolution, which said that a 10-person oversight committee should be overseeing that project. I hope we've learned from this. I know that, and, and I want to commend the city administration for doing some advanced work on developing the oversight committee for the Befford Street project. I expect that it will result in fewer problems, I hope, I anticipate it will result in fewer problems, but, you know, as we look to why East Main didn't work out as we would hope it would, I think it rests very much so in not having an oversight committee. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor in seat two, Councilor Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Sahadi, even though we authorized the other projects, are you going to send a bond down for those other projects?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
Don't we have to authorize a bond as well to go along with those other projects that we've not bonded for yet?
Um, no, Councilor, you authorized the spending of the money by, by authorizing the loan order.
So those bonds are pretty much in place?
They haven't been, because the work hasn't been done. So we would go out short-term on a particular project when the projects begin for those cash flow monies that we will need for the project during that period of time, and then we generally bond the project when it's completed. Neither Purchase Street nor East Main Street has been bonded yet. We have short-term debt on both projects right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor in seat four, Councilor Kilby.
Just to piggyback my colleague to my, my right Councilor Kamara, he's absolutely right. I mean, when, any large project that we've had, whether we're building new elementary schools or, and the like, there is a oversight committee that plays a real invaluable role to making sure that project is done correctly. I mean, we learned from the, from the 70s when the, the high school was built and, and various other projects, that, that was the way to go. Mr. Planner, I, I am upset as well, I mean, correct if I'm wrong, but I think about four or five meetings ago, you were specifically asked by Councilor Kamara about the oversight committee issue, and you said you were implementing it. You said you were, you were in a process of making those recommendations.
I...
I, I, I don't think we'd be here having this discussion about these major issues and major problems if we had a oversight committee, but you can answer the question.
Well, when I was first hired, the construction contract was underway, and, and actually, Councilor Kamara handed me the thing that said there was no oversight committee. We immediately went to the, we immediately went and the Purchase and Bank were, an oversight committee was selected. At the time, none was selected by, for East Main, and so...
Simple question, why?
Because there were no appointments done for East Main. There was only an appointment done for Purchase and Bank.
Why didn't you insist on, on that? Or anyone at this table?
I, I, I've, I sent requests to do that. No, and what I have done since then is for Columbia Square and for Bedford Street, prior to them, prior to its starting, and particularly Bedford, is, you know, was insistent on getting that lined up. The council president and the mayor both made their appointments, and, you know, we have been moving forward with that. I have not received any appointments for Columbia Square. That project, we pretty much, the design has been put on hold until we can get the signal design up and get them working concurrent, and, but I'm still going to be pushing for appointments for the Columbia Square.
I'll, I'll accept that answer, but I'm, I'm hearing tonight, listening intently, I'm hearing a lot of excuses in, in terms of why these projects aren't, aren't accomplished appropriately. That's what all I'm hearing, is excuses.
I was hired, it was under construction, and I knew nothing of it until I was told by Councilor Kamara, and then I, then I went and acted to look at getting committees formed.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. I appreciate the sentiment on the committees, but this is why we have department heads who are supposed to be overseeing these projects. I believe we were actually in the middle of, or speaking on rescinding these authorizations for the projects that are left that hadn't been started yet, and it was objected to at the last meeting, so during the fourth quarter budget report, in the process of motions being made there, so hopefully that could be decided this evening. The other question I have is, Mr. Frye, did you say that you had the contract for the additional streetlights?
Yes, that's been awarded.
And it was how much?
270,000 dollars, roughly.
Okay, I'm just looking at the streetscape invoice update that Mrs. Sahadi had given us dated 7/31, and we had an estimate to install streetlights of 229,898, but we don't have any additional funds in here, so how are we going to make up the difference in the funds?
Um...
It's a 40,000 dollar difference.
We're going to identify the, the necessary avenue to pay for the contract.
So what would that be if it's not on this piece of paper where all of these invoices are lined out? It says the only additional budget remaining for this project, after we've used Chapter 90 money and Fund 4019, which I believe is also supposed to be for streets, we only have 4,951, but if our contract is 270, and we've only estimated 230, where are we going to get another 36,000 dollars?
If necessary, we will look at Fund 4019, which is, and there are some additional monies due into that fund.
And Fund 4019 is, well, I had this conversation, I believe, with Mrs. Sahadi?
It's other capital outlay, correct? Yes, general street repair, right-of-way work.
So why are we using Chapter 90 money and Fund 4019 money, which we didn't even know existed until we had this piece of paper, for streetlights, when we have so many streets to be fixed?
Well, it, it's in order to complete the project that the city council bonded for. The, the actual constructed cost of the project was slightly higher than what was originally bonded for.
So was originally bonded for the loaner was 2,075,000 dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And this project so far has cost 3,037,992 dollars?
With a million of that from the utilities for water.
Do we know how much is in this Fund 4019?
Currently, it has about 25,000 dollars available.
So that doesn't even cover the streetlights?
Like I said, there are monies that are due to that fund that we will be collecting.
Could you let us know what those monies are and when we'll be collecting them and what they're for?
Yeah.
I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion before the council on this item, we're going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is a resolution, which is very similar to where we're at now, discussion regarding the Purchase Street, East Main Street. I think we've kind of highlighted both the workmanship on East Main, and we kind of all spoke about Purchase Street as well. Is there any appetite to continue the discussion? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda is the, sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes, I actually found the email from bond counsel, so I'd like to read it to everyone so that there's no confusion. This is the email that I sent on, I guess, the day after the meeting. It was responded to me on August 15th. I understand that you're asking the couns, I understand that you are asking if the council can change the purpose of an appropriation that was authorized for streetscapes for general street purposes, and we discussed how the projects could be authorized, and then the old projects rescinded, and what the process would be after that vote. There is an overriding issue in that the council cannot take up legislation on its own. It needs to be put in front of the council by the mayor before they can act on it. It is the separation of powers, powers principle. The council can ask the mayor to introduce the topic to them so they can act on it, but they cannot take it up on their own. So that's the issue that Council Kamara just asked.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Fall River Task Force Revised Draft for Discussion Tonight. That is in full council for priority communications. Councilor in seat three?
Yes. It's awkward, I was invited to present on behalf of the task force. Mrs. Viveras is a member, Mrs. Sadler is also in the audience. I would ask them to join me at the table, if that would be...
You're going to go sit at the table?
Yes.
Okay. And just so everybody's aware, who's in the audience and watching at home tonight and the press who's here, this is the last item on our committee on finance agenda tonight. Next, after we're done with this, we'll go to full council, and we'll be addressing the matter that I'm sure you're all here to witness.
No, just...
At some point.
So, members of the council, serving in the capacity of the, as a city council, but the appointed chairman of the Fall River Task Force, I've provided you at various points during the time that we've been meeting with updates as we proceeded, and today you received something that is referred to as the revised task force draft, and is actually now listed as the final document. I'd like to, first of all, commend the other members that were appointed by the council president. It was a very distinguished group of people that served in this task force, and we met monthly, so we met nine times since the task force was appointed back in the end of 2018. I served as chairman, the vice chair was school committee member Kevin Agia, the clerk was Judith Conrad, members, the other four members were Carl Hetzler, Michael Quinn, Gloria Sadler, who sits to my left, and Kathy Ann Viveras, who sits to my right. The members had many interviews with city and town managers from throughout the Commonwealth, made available to us through the Mass Municipal Association. Several of us, and myself, Mrs. Sadler, and Mrs. Conrad traveled to Cambridge to interview the city manager there, as well as other staff, including the solicitor, who is comparable to our Cooperation Council, the assistant city manager, and others who really provide us with a very inspirational presentation on the success of a city manager in the city of Cambridge. We also looked at Worcester and Lowell as two other ribbon communities in Massachusetts that operate under a city manager form of government, and we asked the council to consider this document and to move it forward. We were hopeful initially that we might be able to submit it for consideration by the voters this November, but that timeframe is just not acceptable. I've been in touch with both Senator Roderick's, as well as State Representative Sylvia, and they feel that at a minimum, we would need a month to two months to get it through the state legislature, so we are now looking at, and the senator and the state rep are, are negotiating and communicating with the Secretary of State's office to see if, in fact, this question could be considered on the 2020 ballot, which would, in some ways, be better, because it would be a presidential election, and it would be, mean a great turnout, and the success of this vote, whether it's accepted or rejected, is, is certainly connected to the number of people that would... to the number of people that would participate at the election, and likely the largest turnout we'll get in any election within the next few years would be at a presidential election. So, having said that, I certainly would open it up to any questions. I did submit to the council members some of the advantages, and among them being that, and it's listed on your cover letter, but I'll read it for those who don't have the letter, that establishing the position of city manager and redefining the position of mayor, and establishing the position of deputy mayor as a leadership team directly elected by the voters would give a definite focus on the importance of the council, serving as, if you will, the board of directors for the city. By the way, the proposal is also addressing something that this council has often talked about, which is to be the appointing authority for the Corporation Council. This recommendation that's before you would put the council as the appointing authority, not only for the city manager, but also for the city auditor, the city clerk, and the Corporation Council. The first three positions are paralleling what happens in Cambridge, but because of the uniqueness of Fall River's council, often wanting to see the Corporation Council being beholding, if you will, to the corporation, and the council being the board of directors of that council, that that would be included in this proposal. Also, we all know that the election of the president of the council, and the vice, sometimes the vice president of the council, is often a divisive situation. We are suggesting in this proposal that the mayor and the deputy mayor be not just ceremonial parade marching, baby kissing mayors, but they in fact be the chairman of the board and the vice chairman of the board. So we'd take that divisive situation that sometimes faces a council when they have to choose, and even in my own case, when I was president of the council, it was a five-to-four presidency, there were certainly some divisions there that remained as significant divisions. Also, this proposal would reduce the need for recall elections. It would establish greater opportunity for voter participation through the appointment to various boards and commissions, and it would be a reduction in cost to the taxpayers and rent payers, because not only would we eliminate funding for the city administrative position, because we would be establishing a city manager position, so that's pretty much a wash, but it would also eliminate two positions on the council and one position on the school committee, since the mayor and deputy mayor would be serving as a de facto voting member of both bodies. So there are many other details because of the many issues that are facing us this evening. I would open it up to any questions, not only for myself, but for my two colleagues that are here. The other members of the task force, for various reasons, are not here. We could not have more than three at the table anyway, because having four would mean a violation of the open meeting law. We would have to follow a special meeting and have a joint meeting of the council and the task force. Even though it was ruled that the task force is not an official government entity, that was a ruling by Corporation Council, we have been acting as if we are a government entity. We were appointed by the council president. We've abided by all open meeting law requirements. We have also abided by operating only on the basis of a quorum. And I wonder, is there anything more, Mrs. Sadler or Mrs. Viveras, that you'd like to add at this point?
Counselor in seat six, counsel along.
Just tell us what the process would be with this, where it would go, and how that all falls into play.
Now, if the council, and by the way, councilors don't have to embrace the details in every aspect of this. If the council feels that it's worthy of being moved on, it would move on to the mayor. If the mayor feels, and he wouldn't have to embrace it, and I have no indication as to whether or not he would embrace it, but if he so chose to move it on and give the people the right to choose, it would be then moved on to the state legislature. The reason why I've been particularly connected to my Senator Roderick's and Representative Sylvia, and I would also be reaching out if this council gives us a positive vote to our other state representatives, I have been somewhat in contact with them, but considering that Mr. Sylvia represents just Fall River, and Mr. Roderick's is the senator that represents, those are the two that I've had closest contact with. Both of them understand and have been advising me on the process, making sure that we touch base with the Attorney General and the Secretary of State, and also the general counsel for the great and general court to make sure we're doing it right, language is right, and everything else is going. So once it goes to the legislature, the legislature then would be dealing with a home rule petition from the city of Fall River. Generally, the legislature supports home rule petitions from the Massachusetts communities, cities, and towns. They would then forward it back to the voters, and that's something that we, as a task force, particularly thought was critical to this process, that ultimately it would be the voters that decide. And by the way, in reference to a cost, the original task force, and by the way, Mr. Quinn was a member of the original charter commission, and they had a budget, I think, of $60,000, I think it was. We had a budget of nothing, zero. So all of the work that's been done by this task force, and there have been literally tens of hours, if not hundreds, more than hundreds of hours, we've done on our own. Our travel has been on our own, and we believe we've come up with a document that is worthy of your support and consideration. So, it's my question, answer to your question, Mr. Mark.
A microphone, Counselor.
Comes back to us, voters approve it. This would basically replace our current city charter, correct?
It would, but it wouldn't do that until at the earliest 2022. So the incoming administration that's going to be elected in November would then have, basically, they'd be operating as we've always operated. And then, if the vote were in the presidential election, then that administration would be responsible for implementing the new charter, or the new amendments, by the way. Ninety percent of this charter remains the same. And I'd like to interject something too, because many people have said, well, what about ward councilors? Or what about a combination of district councilors and at-large councilors? And we thought that that would be important, but the task force agreed that the scope that the council gave us was exclusively whether or not we wanted to take a look at the city manager form of government. So there were many of us that felt strongly that we should look at other things. There was some concern about looking at recall elections, about whether or not public employees should seek office, about whether or not there should be ward councilors. But we felt, even though some of us felt very strongly about those issues, we felt that's something that needs to be addressed by a future charter commission, and the new charter under which we currently are operating will have review opportunities to take a look at those kinds of issues. But we wanted to stay exclusively focused on the issue of city manager.
I yield. Anything further?
Yes.
Counselor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
On this, did you vote on this? I know you said you were acting as a governing body. Did you vote on this, and was it a unanimous vote to send this forward?
Yeah, all votes were voted, all votes were voted on by a quorum sitting of the task force. And there were some votes that were divided. In fact, there was one vote that was divided at 50-50, and it had to do with whether or not someone could seek two positions. Let me just address that for a minute. Mrs. Viveras, did you want to touch base with that, because you were one of the.
Get your rest.
Yeah, and you were one of the opponents on this, so.
There, as it currently is before you, an individual that was interested in seeking one of the leadership positions, or campaigning and being elected as part of the leadership team, as it's referred to, could also have the option of running on the same ballot purely as an elected member of one of the two bodies, either school committee or city council. So their name could effectively appear on the ballot in two places. One, as a member of the leadership team, and also as a member of just city council or school committee. And that was done, again, so that if someone was not successful in getting elected as part of a leadership team, they would still be able to serve as a member of the elected body. There was some conversation about how that may be somewhat confusing, number one, because you'd be effectively, the result would be, the individual would be serving on the city council in either case, either as a member of the leadership team or as a member of the council, without the leadership responsibility. So there was some discussion about whether that was somewhat confusing for voters to understand that they could be voting for the same person for the same elected body in two different places on the ballot. Corporation Council ultimately advised us that people have a right to run for whatever office they choose, and since there are two separate categories, if you will, that someone would have an ability to run in both places. So it was determined that based on that, we didn't want to limit anyone's ability to serve, and we allowed that to move forward as you have it.
Counselor Kamara, my question, I guess, was, did all seven members vote yes to send this to the council?
No, the final, some of the members had previously voted, but at the last meeting there were four members that voted to forward this to you in its final form. But previously.
Because there was only four?
Four at the final meeting, but there were two that participated in the drafts that were pretty much the same as you're getting. Just slight changes were made, including that issue about being able to run for two positions rather than just one. So I would say six of the seven of us were on board with that. One of the members only attended two of the nine meetings because of conflicts, so I don't want to disparage anyone for not participating because of conflict with other meetings that that member had, but this was definitely the census, the consensus of the six of the seven members, and that one member who was not much of a participant, we regret that I can't say it's all seven that were on board.
Okay. And the other question I have is, Corporation Council on September 4th had an area in question. Has that been addressed?
Yes, all the issues that the Corporation Council submitted, and the Corporation Council made it clear that he was not advisor to us, but he did provide us with input when asked. So every input that he provided to us, we implemented.
So it says somewhere perhaps in more than one place, it should be defined that the leadership team runs as one entity?
Yes.
And appear on the ballot as such?
Yes. So that's similar to the way we elect a governor and lieutenant governor, the way we elect a president and vice president. So if, for example, Council President Ponte and Council Vice President LaBeau wanted to run as the Ponte-Labeau ticket, they would be on a signup sheet, what do we call those? Nomination paper? And people would sign for them together as a leadership team. If either of those two decided they wanted to just sort of make sure that they get back on the council or back into a position, they could also run separately. They would have to collect separate nomination papers if they were going to run separately for a city council position.
And the most important question, I think, is if the council was to send this up to the mayor, and the mayor was to send it up to the state, this ultimately is the voters who are going to decide on this?
Absolutely voters. This is a voter decision ultimately. I wanted to also introduce further, because I know all of you know me, and you know City Administrator Viveras, you may not know Mrs. Sadler. Gloria Sadler is a prominent Fall River resident of the Flint, and I want to particularly also underscore, this committee is probably as diverse and academic in terms of scholarship. I was going to ask all the degrees that were represented on this committee, but this is a very astute group of people. But Mrs. Sadler was the campus dean and director of the Taunton Campus at Bristol Community College, and she's also a doctorate candidate, completing her thesis in organization and governmental.
Efficiency and effectiveness.
Efficiency and effectiveness. But if you have questions for Mrs. Sadler, or if you'd like to also interject, she's been sort of a quiet member of our committee, but she provides a great quality presentation. But if you grab the mic, if you're going to.
I really don't have much to say. I'm an individual. I like to be boots on the ground, hands-on. Efficiency and effectiveness is what I do best with my PhD. That's what my dissertation focus is, so I don't have anything specific that I would like to say.
Thank you.
I yield, Counselor.
Anything further? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you very much, councilors.
Is your motion to adjourn finance? Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to go right into our full council meeting at this time. Fall River City Council meeting will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Viveras?
Yeah.
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Kilby.
Counselor President, I think so many people here that are.
Microphone, I can't hear you.
We have a large crowd here tonight, so I'm wondering if it'd be wise to take the items out of order and deal first with the items that were filed after the agenda, so we could get people home.
Sure. Is your motion to take items 3B, item 3B, out of order?
Yes.
Motion to take items 3B out of order has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
So before you, we have the council president's letter to the mayor and request for the temporary removal. We have an emergency preamble that would require action.
And thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we begin that discussion, I find it to be appropriate, like I'd like to address the council as the sponsor of this. I wrote a couple of comments, and I'd like to address the council and the community on this, if you'd hear me out for a moment. Similar to what we did in October, when we were faced this, under these same circumstances. So tonight, once again, we're here to discuss that the mayor got arrested for the second time in 12 months. I want to remind everyone that we are in the council, that we are here tonight deeming the mayor unable to serve in his capacity as mayor if the vote does prevail. I think it would be prudent for us, and at least from my perspective, to not only take that vote, but rather put on record the reasons why he is not able to serve. Number one, the city employees and department head morale has been damaged. His ability to discipline city employees because of the possibility of intimidation, intimidation exists. Relationships with state and federal officials have been damaged. Governor Baker, Representative Kennedy, have all called for his resignation. Grants and other funding sources will be impacted. There may be more inappropriate invoices and/or stipends given after further research. The United States Attorney General has publicly stated that this is a perfect storm for corruption. In the Charter, Section 2-7B and C empowers the city council to summons him to appear before them to answer questions regarding almost anything in the city, and he will not be able to answer questions on the advice of his council because of the pending charges and the investigation. Therefore, he cannot fulfill his duties of the office. Charter 9-14 contains language that the duty of the mayor is to faithfully follow the charter, which he hasn't and now cannot do. Charter 3-2, he is supposed to be the person who makes sure that it is efficient administration of all city activities and functions, which, if we call it, for town appearances and/or communications, communications with department heads, he may struggle to do. Restrictions on communications with witnesses and connections. Restrictions on communications with witnesses and connection with the matters for which he is indicted for or charged for, which although list the witnesses have not been made public, may include city staff and employees. One is an individual who has yet to resign and is still employed with our city, as well as documents under such official controls. In addition to co... In addition to the company, he accompanies the mayor to possibly other events and has other communications. The nature of these indictments relates to the misuse of funds and in his capacity as He was arrested on October 11th, 2018 for matters which were, he was accused of at 6:00 AM in Bridgewater, not on city business, but in a city-issued vehicle. And then arrested again on Friday, September 6th, 2019 on similar and much more significant charges. Defense of 2018 and 2019 charges will also be time-consuming and distracting for the mayor. If occurring here in this building, in City Hall, he may also be inappropriately involving staff and other department heads and diverting them away from the city business, as well as causing them to undertake additional city obligations not properly within scope of their services. The mayor completely lacks credibility and at this time, due to the additional multiple charges, when he creates a lack of credibility in the city, for example, would a national company be willing to negotiate economic development opportunities for someone under indictment? We don't know that. I stated in October 2018, and I'm going to conclude here, uh, that we have to be realistic in how much pressure this mayor is under, how much of a distraction this must be for him on his ability to lead and perform his duties. And we must also be mindful of the image and the reputation of this community. As President of this council tonight, I'm respectfully requesting that the mayor step down until he resolves his legal matters or temporarily steps aside. But apparently, he hasn't yet. I am sure that there will be some people here who say that the city council, or I'll take the heat for it, is challenging the city and will cost the taxpayers money. For those people, I'll counter that comment by saying, not one dollar will be spent if the mayor steps down. In addition, I would like to conclude this by saying, for those individuals or people who may be thinking that I'm lying or dying or wanting his seat as council president for the purpose of filing these resolutions, that is not the case. If I wanted his seat, I would have ran in the recall or I would have ran this fall. I'm, I'm simply just trying to step up for this community and be a leader as your council president. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If you can read the emergency preamble?
Whereas the immediate passage of the accompanying proposed order is deemed necessary inasmuch as it vitally affects the health and safety of the public, now therefore be it resolved by affirmative vote of no less than two-thirds of the entire council that said order is hereby deemed an emergency measure in accordance with the provisions of section two dash nine B of the city charter and the recitals contained in said order.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Roll call. On the adoption of the emergency preamble?
On the adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes. Madam Clerk, if you can continue to read the, um, next item on our agenda, uh, which would be the, uh, the emergency order?
Mr. President, if you...
Counselor?
Just before she does that, can, can we just remind everybody in the audience, good, bad, or indifferent, whatever side of the aisle that you may be on with this particular matter, uh, that we hold the applause and the comments to a minimum?
Yeah.
So, that we can just have the decorum that you've outlined in the beginning of the meeting?
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you for the, again, I'll reiterate, the council, if we could hold the applause, I understand there's a lot of emotion here, but, uh, let the council conduct its business with the least amount of distractions as possible. Madam Clerk?
The emergency order ordered that the city council of the city of Fall River, acting pursuant to section three dash eight of the city charter, makes the following determination. Whereas the city council of the city of Fall River has deemed the within order to be necessary to protect the public health and safety consistent with section two dash nine B of the city charter. And whereas Jazil F. Correa II was indicted in 2018 on charges that he allegedly defrauded investors and used the money to pay for a lavish lifestyle and political campaign, and in particular, nine counts of wire fraud and four counts of filing false tax returns. And whereas law enforcement officials indicated at that time that Mr. Correa was the subject of further investigation potentially involving additional charges, and whereas such 2018 arrest indictments and ongoing investigation damaged Mr. Correa's credibility and therefore the city's credibility, the significance of which was evidenced by the statement of Harold Shaw, the FBI Special Agent in Charge from Massachusetts, as follows. Mayor Correa has brought undeserved shame and embarrassment upon the city of Fall River and betrayed the trust of his investors and betrayed the trust of his constituents, as well as the recall election process that followed. And whereas Mr. Correa now faces numerous subsequent charges, including bribery, extortion, conspiracy, extortion and aiding and abetting, wire fraud, and false, filing false tax returns, according to the U.S. Attorney for the District of Massachusetts, based upon an extensive three-year investigation. And whereas according to FBI Special Agent Joseph R. Bonalavonta, such allegations indicate a perfect storm of corruption, the combination of a highly competitive industry and a mayor who was solely responsible for approving all non-opposition letters in the city. In that, according to the indictment, Correa agreed to issue legally required non-opposition letters to cannabis establishments in exchange for payments to him or his campaign ranging from $100,000 to $250,000. And whereas such 2019 charges involve alleged misuse of funds and abuse of position, and whereas mayor, he will continue to have unique and unfettered access to the city's financial accounts and documentation. And whereas through the 2019 charges are presently allegations, they are of such significance that they implicate the core functions of the city's chief executive. And whereas the nature of these indictments and charges compounded by earlier indictments and charges result in a significant and substantial breach of the public trust and cripple Mr. Correa's ability to represent the city as its mayor, now therefore be it ordered that the city council of the city of Fall River, consistent with the authority granted to the city council pursuant to section three dash eight A of the Home Rule Charter, determines that Mr. Correa is unable to perform the duties of the office of mayor while the charges that are subject of said 2018 and 2019 indictments are pending.
Motion to adopt emergency order.
Motion to adopt the emergency order has been made by Counsel Kilby?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Discussion. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Stephen Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, this is certainly an issue that, uh, has weight heavy on all of us in this community. Clearly, none of us want to be in this position where we are in this community, and certainly there needs to be some sensitivity, uh, to our mayor and to his family and to our city, uh, for the circumstances, uh, that we are currently facing. Uh, I'm reminded, um, of words of my inspiration, uh, in becoming a public servant, uh, John Kennedy, uh, who, uh, reminded us, reminded us that sometimes, um, we do things not because they're easy, but because they're hard. And, uh, it was hard for me to stand alone as a no vote, uh, but I am a firm believer in the American, uh, tenet, the foundation of our country, that one is presumed innocent until proven guilty. And while I, while the, the, the charges are overwhelming, it's a hard position to take, that you want to see the court proceed with its due diligence to determine the innocence or the guilt of the man. And so, that is the basis of my, first of all, considering, uh, this not to be an emergency. One week from today, the voters will decide, uh, who the final two candidates are, and several weeks after that, the voters will decide what they want to do as it relates to the leadership of our city. It's going to be a lot longer for the legal battle that will occur, uh, by the implementation of what I anticipate is going to be an overwhelming vote to act on the matter that's before us in three dash A. The Corporation Council has already indicated that he will fund through his office, through our tax dollars, uh, the legal counsel that will represent the, the city council. He will also, either himself or his staff or outside counsel, will represent the city on the other side. So, the city taxpayers will be paying a very expensive and long court battle between Corporation Council and Corporation Council revenue that the council will, uh, hire to represent it. So, we will end up paying lawyers on both sides of the issue, all paid by the taxpayers, and it conceivably could, uh, advance into the hundreds of thousands of dollars in order for us to come to grips with this. Also, we have been provided, legal counsel has provided us with, I believe, very substantial argument that this is doomed to failure. There is a legal precedent in Turner versus the city of Boston. Counselor Turner, a city counselor in Boston, had done some, something that caused his colleagues to feel he should be removed from his seat as a city counselor. The city council voted to remove him from his seat. It was challenged in court. It parallels this. It was challenged in court, it went to the Supreme Judicial Court, and the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that elected officials do not have the authority to remove another elected official. In spite of the language that's in our charter, I believe that we will see that the Turner versus the city of Boston case is precedent for our doing what we're doing. We did not hire, and it's one of the arguments that I believe is so, uh, key on the, on the city manager form of government. Had we had a city manager who had been in a situation like this, the council could vote with a majority vote to remove that city manager. But the mayor does not work for the city council. The mayor works for the people of Fall River. And there are four ways for the mayor to be removed from office. He can resign, and this council has been on record, is supporting that he resign. He can be convicted of a crime, and that is yet to be determined, but that will be going to court. He can be removed by recall, and that recall process did go forward, and he survived that and continues to serve. Or he can be incapacitated, and that's what this council is basing its vote on, that he is incapacitated. Well, last time I saw him, he was very much capacitated. He was moving and he was working, and as far as I know from my driving around the city, the city is functioning. Trash is being picked up, sidewalks are being repaired, roads are being improved, parks are being improved. The city is improving. So, all of that tells me that there's not an incapacitation. Ultimately, and, and finally, he can be removed from office within a very short time, and that's the power of the people. In September, a week from today, and then if he survives September, then November, first Tuesday of November. So, I will take the uncomfortable position that it's wrong for us to do something that I think is not within our jurisdiction. I don't think it is within our jurisdiction to remove a mayor from office. From all I understand of the law, from what I understand of the Turner case, uh, what I understand about being an elected official, all of these things tell me that this is not our jurisdiction. But council will do as it chooses. I respect all of my colleagues. I, 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 I have, I am honored to serve with this council as I've been honored to serve with councils in the past. But I believe, and I'm willing to stand alone when I believe I'm right. So, uh, I will stand alone, uh, if necessary, um, and I just would ask people to respect the fact that, uh, that this is the nature of politics, that sometime you take an unpopular position, and believe me, I understand this is not necessarily the popular position, but I think it's the right position, and I'm willing to stand alone. And with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat seven, Counsel, uh, sorry, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long?
I think when we talk about incapacitation, it talks about the capability, okay, of the mayor moving forward. Um, I think it's very clear to me, um, and it's a tough decision, uh, to make, but he is, in every contract that's been signed prior is suspect, and any contracts going forward are suspect. Um, his credibility is shot. Any appointments previous are suspect. Any appointments going forward are suspect. I cannot see how any, anything coming down from the mayor at this point that we can wholeheartedly support, um, without making some type of, uh, reason or, any reasonable person at this point would say, uh, it's time to step down. Um, I think this council, I mean, we look at it, he's unable to travel out of Massachusetts or Ireland, he's unable to go to Washington, DC for a mayor's conference. He's unable to answer any of, any of our questions if we start to talk about some of the things that are going on for a river. If that may come up in his trial, he'll be, have to say, you know, on the advice of council, I can't answer that. So, you know, it really, really handcuffs him in performing his duties, and when that happens, he then becomes incapable of performing the duties of mayor. That's what we're making the decision here tonight. That's, that's where I'm going to stand, and I'll stand alone, but I know I'm going to stand with my fellow councils, and I hope they will stand with me. But that's what we're trying to decide tonight. Is he capable of still doing the business? It's not whether he can walk or whether he can talk, it's whether that business that has to be done is going to be looked at and have, uh, uh, be realistically looked at and say that it's, it's legitimate. Everything that comes from this administration from here on in, and whatever's happened in the past, is now suspect. And that's a shame, and I think it's time for this council to stand up. And whether it goes to court or it doesn't go to court, it probably will go to court, but I'll, I'll, I'll take my chances with that, because I want to be standing here today saying, I do not have, I do not have any confidence in this mayor moving forward, and I will do anything within my power to make sure he does not continue. And it's not until this election, and it's not till election in November. He would, this is till January 1st of next year. So, depending what happens in these elections, if, if, for the sake of argument, he's defeated, he's still the mayor until January 1st, and he can still conduct his business however he wants, okay? And that is, he can hire, he can fire, he can appoint, he can do whatever he wants to do. And we're going to have to sit here and really, really do, uh, it, it, it's almost impossible to do what we're going to need to do to pass anything that comes down from the administration. So, we're, that handcuffs us going forward. So, I'm supporting this, and, uh, I hope my colleagues do too. And, uh, with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. Uh, the perfect example of what is going on is when we tried to put a limitation on the pot and, uh, to eight, it went up to 11, and he's very adamant that he didn't want that. He didn't want it for a reason. It was reported by one of the, uh, Harvard News, uh, reporters that he picked up something like $60,000, and, uh, the Office of Political Finance says, it's all right, that's your defense fund. Defense fund? He seen a loophole there. He seen a loophole, and he went out and, uh, committed fraud, committed, uh, picking up monies just about any place that he could do it. And he didn't do it by himself, he brought in other people to commit the crimes that he done. This is the worst that I ever seen in my political life. You talk about Buddy Cianci. He was a priest next to this guy, you know? And the closest thing to what he's done here in Fall River...
Counselor, finish without a distraction, please.
It's like a Soprano, uh, case, you know? Money in a shed, they go to Dunkin' Donuts and pick up some money, and, what, what's going on here? And, you know, I gotta live with all these people in Fall River, and that's all I hear everywhere. What are you going to do tonight? How are you going to vote tonight? It's time to put an end to it, and that's it. We can go with the repercussions. Uh, you know, non-oppositions, uh, he's up to 14. He said he was going to have five places, then he had eight. Well, we're going to stick two more in. We'll do 11. My colleague in seat number one, he's, okay, we'll go to 11. Couple of weeks, not even a week, he's up to... Couple of weeks, not even a week, he's up to 14. He gives it to his girlfriend's brother, and whatever, one thing after another. He can sit there and said, I'm innocent. You've got to be kidding me. You've got to be kidding me, everything's there. 18,000 pages of testimonies, probably wiretaps and everything else. It's time to vote. Put it away, Mr. Mayor. Take a vacation, go fishing, whatever your case. Pack your bags, because I think you're going to go a little bit. I worked in a jail 12 years. I hope you don't get 12 years, but he's definitely going to get something, and some of his co-conspirators are going as well, and this is not the end of the game. There's six or seven people that got arrested, some of you might remember, on gaming charges throughout the city of Fall River, and they all got busted. That's going to the FBI. That's coming down as well. And what happened there, whoever had machines are going there every week, every two weeks, okay, yeah, all right, here's a little white envelope, take it to the mayor. And it's happened, it's happened. So, you can see the mix. So, myself, I think it's dying, time to do the right thing. That's it. And, you know, I'll take the repercussions too. They don't want to vote for me, oh, well and good, and that's it. I'll tell it the way it is, that's the way it is. It's time to move on, it's time for somebody else to take over till this situation is done. I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I stop my comments, I do want to address a couple of statements that were made by Counselor in seat three. First of all, if the Turner case, let me back up. First thing I heard was, if we're right, if I'm right, and quite frankly, I've been one of the most vocal opponents of the mayor, and I've said this to individuals who have called me to tell me that I was right, and I'm going to say this to the counselors who say that they're going to stand because they feel they're right. This isn't about doing, being right, it's about doing the right thing and doing the right thing for the city of Fall River. There's a difference, okay? And that's what we need to remember. And if we're going to stop focusing on the Turner case, I hope the Turner case is used. The Turner case actually will bolster the city council's argument moving forward, because the Boston case in itself had a removal of an elected official, and there was no ordinance or no charter to allow for that to happen. That was the first issue. Second issue is that we're not removing anybody. Per the charter under Section 3-8B of the Home Rule Charter, the city council has been given the executive authority and function to have the mayor temporarily absent, removed from office, temporarily, not permanently removed, of his duties. And that is outlined specifically in that section, okay? So, I think it's really time for this council to actually execute that function, the executive function of the city charter. In terms of the considerations that need to be given, I think you've articulated some good points, beyond the fact that the U.S. Attorney General has publicly stated that this is the perfect storm of corruption, beyond the fact that there are restriction communications for witnesses that, quite frankly, we don't know that list of witnesses. They could be city employees or other individuals that have authority or decision-making powers in the city government. The nature of the indictments related to misuse of funds, the fact that this completely lacks the credibility, and additional charges that are coming forward creates even more lack of credibility for the city. This creation, obviously, these issues obviously create an instability for current businesses and the distrust of city government in general. And I've served in the capacity of municipal government in some form or another since 2006. I've taken a lot of, I've made a lot of decisions, taken a lot of votes, and quite frankly, I think this, for me personally, is probably one of the easier ones that I will be taking. I think it's pretty clear-cut that this is something that we need to do. If there was true leadership, the mayor would have stepped aside. We had given them the opportunity. The only individual that is creating a legal battle or financial constraints, or putting financial constraints or burdens on the city is Jaisel Correa. He is the individual who is under federal indictments for 24 counts. Not one city counselor is accused of any of these wrongdoings. But yet, just to remind individuals, one of the first tasks that the mayor did as a new mayor was hired Hill Kamara, an investor, and put him in a place as the head of BCTC at a salary of $80,000. Now, Mr. Kamara is part of the co-conspirators that were indicted. We also have a situation where Jaisel Correa was offered, in another investor, his son a job in lieu of paying back the investment in Snow Owl. We have the situation which was highlighted of the chief of staff's salary in the indictments, and also the snow stipend that this city council questioned for a very long time, to be told that the reason the chief of staff was receiving that was because of all the additional hours and work that was being put in. The mayor has unfeathered ability to continue to give stipends and has financial control over the city and its department heads. We go back to the Make It Here campaign. We had questions about all the vendors that came in for the marketing portion, no bids, contracts going to people who were associated with Providence College because he's an alum. We have the CDA stipend for the mayor's assistant, Monica Souza, who's supposed to be doing business outreach facade program, things that are done internally by department heads already, the treasurer's office, the building inspector. We're giving another stipend for that individual. We have liquor licenses being issued to the girlfriend's family, the mayor's girlfriend's family, when we all know that there has been a long list, a waiting list, for individuals who have been looking for liquor licenses. But yet, two liquor licenses were issued to the girlfriend's family. We have the $1.6 million coming from the state to revitalize the city pier through the Mass Work Grant. We have a five-year lease from that project going to the mayor's girlfriend's family, which they'll receive $6,900 per season for six months to operate the city pier. The mayor's girlfriend's family was going to invest $190,000, and the CDA, the RDA was to invest $400,000 of additional monies. A third liquor license was issued. This is going to be a full bar, storage facilities, pavilion, along the dock for transit boats, again, and no bid. We have the streetscapes that we just discussed, $1.4 million for Purchase Street. Just so happens that that roadway was paved roughly eight years prior to the suggestion that we do the streetscapes on Purchase Street. Let's talk about Purchase Street for a second. The mayor's girlfriend and her family just bought a building on Purchase Street to open up two restaurants. They were given additional liquor licenses for that restaurant. Then we have Dave Hebert, who owns some commercial property on Purchase Street, where the mayor happened to live rent-free for at least two years. We go to the marijuana licenses. We have two marijuana licenses that were issued to the mayor's girlfriend's brother, on top of all the other issues that we have just heard about the marijuana licenses. Then we get to the situation with the indictment with the trench permit that was issued for the water connection services to, I believe, Kilburn Street, I'm sorry, I apologize. The charge there, $7,950. Also calling into question and determining, undermining the internal controls from a financial standpoint, and also from our department heads' authority to actually sit back and say, no, this isn't right, we're not going to do this. I, quite frankly, know for a fact that department heads are afraid to speak up and say when they disagree with this mayor for retaliation. We saw the retaliation after the recall. We saw Paul Coogan be removed from the Durfee High School Building Committee. There's more retaliation to come down. We've seen Ken Fiola be terminated from his contract with OED and the Redevelopment Authority, because he made a statement that if the mayor was under federal indictment or investigation by the FBI, he should resign. And then it came out that Carol Fiola may run for mayor, right? So, we've got this political back and forth going on. Talk about the gaming machines. We've heard the gaming machines, and I'll say this again, I've said it before, everybody wants to say that's Rumoville. It's not Rumoville, I call it foreshadowable. We know that there was a sweep for illegal gaming machines throughout the city, where individuals have said that they paid $5,000 for licensing of those machines. That's still before the FBI and the grand jury. The U.S. Attorney stated in his press conference that investigations are still ongoing. We haven't even concluded it. But yet, we're going to let the individual who has 24 federal indictments, which can include extortion, conspiracy, aid and abetting, to continue to be the leader of our city? And to think that we should be comfortable with the decision-making that's going to go on for the next six months? My colleague in seat six is accurate, this goes to January. How can any one of us feel comfortable with the decisions that are going to be made? And those are just instances that we know of. Can you imagine the items that we do not know? There is a serious, serious problem, and I think it's about time that, since the administration does, or Jaisel Correa does not want to provide the appropriate leadership for the city, that this city council steps up and provides the leadership that the city of Fall River expects and requires, and that is to vote, to put him aside temporarily, and to have the city council fill in as the mayor, so that he can perform the duties until such a time that the voters have the opportunity to vote a new mayor in. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. My intention tonight was really not to comment much. If anyone knows me, I really do not take pride on pounding someone when they're down, pounding someone when they're in serious hardship, and pung someone due to their failures and due to their mistakes that they make. So, I just got a couple of things to say. I respect Counselor Stephen Kamara, he knows that, I respect his opinion, I always have and I always will. But I will state that if we do not take this vote, this city's going to pay a higher price from now until January than legal expenses. Since the mayor came on the scene some five years ago, let's go back and think about it. Shaun, Mr. Counselor Kadeem articulated all the reasons why we should take this vote, a positive vote here, but since he came on the political scene five years ago, he's been shrouded in controversy, whether it was the incident down the waterfront, just week after week, month after month, his heavy-handed dealings and his criminal activity, it's just brazen. So, how can an individual who's already indicted by the United States of America be so brazen to incur other charges that are totally related to his job as mayor? I take no pleasure in this vote. The gentleman spoke to Citizens Input claiming that President Ponte wants his job. Throughout this whole process, over the last number of years, Jaisel Correa's tried to deflect his own shortcomings, saying it's my political enemies that are setting me up. I'm not going to be bullied by Ken Fiola, I'm not going to be bullied by Shaun Kadeem, I'm not going to be bullied by Brad Kilby, I'm not going to be bullied by the city council. I mean, be a man. Step down. Work on your problems. Show some humbleness. And quite frankly, been up in federal court a couple of times, that is going to bode well for, eventually, if there's a disposition of this case. That's one of the things a judge will look at when implementing the sentencing guidelines, is that realizing and being humble and realizing that I made a mistake, I want to move on. I wish Jaisel Correa well, I really do, outside of politics. This type of individual should not be involved in any way, shape, or form, holding elective office. So, it's, obviously, I'm voting yes on this. It's a long time coming, and I totally agree that if we don't take a vote here, as I said, there's going to be even a higher price to pay. And finally, mark my words, this council is going to be judged in a future, many years to come, on the vote that we take tonight. So, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LaBeau.
The United States Attorney on Friday on national television said conspiracy, extortion, and bribery, he has run that town as a pay-to-play institution. He has directly victimized the city of Fall River. This council took a vote back in October, and unfortunately, at that time, it didn't pass. People thought those were items, his first indictment, were items that were before he was mayor. If you actually read the first indictment, it specifically states on the second page, he was a counselor from January 2014 through December 2015. He began his Snow Owl scheme, I guess, in January of 2013, and it lasted through May of 2017. Those first counts were all while he was a city counselor and mayor. They might not have done with his job, but he was an elected official while he was taking money from all of those investors and spending it on his lifestyle. I had a whole bunch of pages that I was going to say, but I'm not going to say any of them. Item 38 says, whether by reason of sickness or other cause, the mayor is unable to perform the duties of the office. We are talking about other cause here. I received a letter today that summed it up. I suggest that performing the duties of office means doing so lawfully and ethically, and there is no way that that is happening with this mayor, unfortunately. 24 federal indictments, it's an embarrassment to the city, it's an embarrassment to the residents. This council needs to take a stand. They tried to do that back in October. Had we, we may not be in this position again today, but here we are. And Counselor in seat six is correct, even though there is a vote next week and a vote again in November, the end of the term is not until the end of December, first week of January, when a new mayor is sworn in, and I don't think that this mayor should have the keys to his office for even one more day. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from Counselor in seat two or Counselor in seat eight? This item, hearing no further discussion before the council. There's a motion. Madam Clerk, can you reiterate the motion, and who made it, please? The record?
Myself and...
Counselor Kilby.
Counselor Kadeem.
Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. The motion is to adopt the emergency order.
Motion to adopt the emergency, that has been read by the clerk already. Roll call, Madam Clerk, hearing no further discussion.
We already took that vote, my counsel president.
Pardon, Counselor?
I believe we already took that vote, the emergency preamble?
Oh, the emergency preamble passed, yep. Now, we are going to vote on the order the clerk read.
Very good.
On this, is there any further discussion or any, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the emergency order, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLevy LaBeau?
Yes.
LaBeau?
Yes.
Palatier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes. I think it would be appropriate at this time, in addition to the order that's been before us...
The motion to take 16A and B out of order?
If we can, if we can. I think it'd be appropriate to move that in the event that the council, in the event that council for Mr. Correa seeks the issuance of a temporary restraining order to prevent the city council president from acting as mayor in accordance with the preceding vote of Section 3- shade of the city charter, the city council authorized its attorney to agree to the imposition of such order for the purpose of establishing an agreed-upon date for holding a preliminary injunction hearing and any related scheduling matters. In addition to that, I'd also like to add to that motion that there should be a time period by which the mayor steps aside or gives the keys to his office, to the clerk, however we want to do that, perhaps until Friday, this Friday, at 5:00 PM. I'd entertain that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Vice President LaBeau. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call.
For our city council meeting, and now we call back to order. Council Kilby, last, before we adjourned, or recessed, rather, you had a, you wanted to take another item out of order?
Yes, Mr. President. We, a motion to take 16A and B out of order since they're in line with the last vote we took.
Take items 16A and 16B out of order has been made.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, counselor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to take items 16A and 16B out of order has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, when you get to it.
Whereas in light of the recent arrest and new charges brought against Mayor Jazal F. Correa II, whereas the nature of these new charges are directly related to his duties as mayor, and whereas this will be in the best interest of the City of Fall River, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council go on record demanding Mayor Jazal F. Correa resign from office of mayor of the City of Fall River.
Really, I have nothing to say beyond the fact that it's in line with the previous vote. It may end up in his wastebasket upstairs tomorrow, but hopefully not. Hopefully, he'll ponder his future and think about things over the next couple of days and make the decision I think that people think he should make, most people, anyway. Are you?
Is that a motion to adopt as well?
Yes, please.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kadeem, discussion. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
On adoption of the resolution, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Panti?
Yes. Next order, 16B.
Whereas on September 6th, 2019, Jazal F. Correa II was arrested and indicted on five counts of extortion conspiracy, five counts of extortion, aiding and abetting, and one count of bribery by the United States of America, whereas the indictment states that honor before March 9th, 2017, excavator number one received a trench permit from Fall River to dig a trench to provide water service for a sprinkler system at 379 Kilburn. And whereas excavator number one invoiced Fall River for this work, which cost approximately $7,950 instead of middleman number one, and whereas it was a departure from excavator number one's typical practice to invoice the city instead of the building owner for this type of work, and whereas when excavator number one performed the trench-related work, he commented to middleman number one in some insubstance, "You must know someone at City Hall," referring to the fact that he was invoicing the city instead of middleman number one, and whereas a $10,000 snow stipend paid to the chief of staff and 50% of the chief of staff's salary was allegedly kicked back to the mayor, and whereas this behavior and activity may involve other city departments and department heads, and whereas under the Home Rule Charter, Article 2, Section 2-7A, the City Council may make investigations into the affairs of the city and into the conduct and performance of any city agency, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council president immediately appoint an independent audit firm to conduct an audit on the above-mentioned activities, which shall be funded by the surplus funds available in the City Council expense account, audit line. The audit firm shall present its findings and recommendations to the City Council upon the conclusion of its audit. The City Council shall make a determination of referral to the Attorney General's office and/or District Attorney's Office for further review based on the findings of the audit.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion, the sponsor of the resolution, counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this resolution pretty much speaks for itself, but I do want to just state that I think we all recognize that the negative impact that this has, not only on department heads, but the repair that we're going to have to do going forward is going to take a very, very long time to regain the community's trust in what's being done in operationally. And I just want to make sure that from an internal control standpoint and from a procedural standpoint, that everything is on the up and up. I don't necessarily question the integrity of our department heads, but I do question whether or not things may have been overlooked because of fear for retaliation by the mayor, more specifically, being fired. So I think it would just be appropriate for this council to utilize its authority to do an investigation, have an audit of the books based on the information that is here. And if there's anything that would suggest that we need to do further audits or reviews in different departments, then we move forward. I just don't want to be in a position where this information was brought to our, to our knowledge and we really did not do our due diligence to have that checks and balance and try to kind of improve and maintain the integrity of the internal controls and the process of government. Are you?
Thank you. Next, Counselor speak, also a cosponsor of the resolution, counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
I'll just quickly add that ironically enough, on Friday, Sean and I had the exact same, well, not exact same, but close to the exact same resolution that we were going to file, and working with him, tweaking the language a little bit, I thank him for the collaboration, and I think it makes total sense. And with, even with the possibility, obviously, of a new administration coming in, I think this could be invaluable information for him or her, so. Are you?
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, I have been an opponent of other issues surrounding this issue, but I am particularly concerned about agreements that the city has made in order to advance the property holdings of one of the alleged co-conspirators. We have two public school buildings that were transferred, and then we also have had other issues, including a public employee that either is, has resigned or hasn't resigned. Will the, will this resolution address those issues, or is there a need for it to be amended so that we can also address the outstanding issues that exist? Do we have any requests, for instance, on re-acquiring the public buildings that were sold to the individual that is listed as a co-conspirator in this process? Do we have any requests as it relates to the employment of one of the co-conspirators in this building, who is continuing, as I understand, continues to collect an $80,000 salary? Does this address that?
I'll let the sponsors of the resolution answer that question, but to answer, or to hint to one of your comments, one of the co-conspirators that you have mentioned has not been put on paid administrative or any kind of administrative leave at this point. I've had personal conversations with Attorney Macy on this matter. He's still looking into it. It's my understanding that that individual does not have a human resources, per se, department, from what I'm gathering at this point, who could put that person on notice. It's a mayoral appointment, and that is an organization which is being explained to me as a separate organization within the City of Fall River. So that specific individual, without getting into any additional details, has not been put on any kind of paid administrative leave, or any leave for that matter, but the matter is being discussed internally with Corporation Counsel Macy. But that, to answer your question, and I'll let the counselor in seat one address it too, I don't think that necessarily answers that. That's more of an administrative duty that I hope Corporation Counsel will be able to address shortly.
Just to go into the other issue, though, related to the sale of public property, do we have any requests to regain? It would be a shame if the, those two very significant public buildings, public school, former public school buildings, remain ISOs for years to come as a result of inaction by this council. Is there an action that we can't take?
I think to make this the least confusing as possible going forward, why don't we just do an amendment to this current resolution, if you want, to address that, and that could be part of the internal investigation, or that?
I would ask my colleagues that have co-sponsored this, if they could have language that would, that would cover that, those issues, and if they do add that language, I'd be willing to support this resolution.
I'm sure, Sean.
You yield, counselor? Hold on one second. You yield, counselor?
Yes, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four?
Yeah.
Counselor Kilby?
I think it's broad enough in scope, but I have no problem with amendment. Council President is going to appoint the committee, so if we can maybe put a line in there stating that you're going to charge the committee with their task and, you know, any other issues that you think should be addressed for them to review.
So any other issues?
You're going to appoint the committee according to the resolution, and you're going to charge the committee with the scope of their work.
So any other issues, any other issues that the committee feels appropriate, including the sale of school buildings?
That's fine.
Is that, are you comfortable with that?
Previous sale of school.
The previous sale of school buildings. Is that a motion to amend?
So be it.
Motion to amend has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion on the amendment, only, on the amendment. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
Could you just read the amendment again?
Madam Clerk, do you want to grab it?
Is that the council president charged the audit firm with any other issues that the firm feels appropriate, including previous sales of school buildings?
Then one of the people mentioned, co-conspirators, I guess, also received CPA funds, and those votes were possibly at the direction of the mayor, so if that covers anything else that comes up, then fine with that. Are you?
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you. Just on the amendment, because I think the, the new amendment is generic enough to give you the ability to manage the scope as you see fit. I would agree with Counselor in seat five that the scope now should include the fact that the director of BCTC has not resigned, since he is a individual who has been identified. I think we should be looking at BCTC in terms of the funding mechanisms and any type of invoicing that has taken place, and then also CPA monies. I think it would be good to talk to some individuals that may have been on the committee. They may have some insight. I know there was a suggestion at one point that the mayor did make a telephone call to one of the members, forcing them to vote on an issue that referenced Mr. Hibbit and his, his application, so I think the audit firm should look into that as well. And then there's also some allegations about properties being purchased from CDA, so I think we should have conversations with Community Development Agency to find out exactly what has transpired in terms of that and see if there's any audit work that needs to be done there as well. So again, I think this goes and speaks to the concern that we have and the far-reaching impacts it has on the various departments and municipal government, so I hope my colleagues would support this.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none on the motion, on the amendment to this current resolution, roll call. If you can just read that, just for clarification, one more time, Madam Clerk, so there's no confusion, on the amendment is what we're voting on right now.
The amendment would be that the council president charged the audit firm with any other issues that the firm feels appropriate, including previous sales of school buildings, funding of BCTC, and disbursement of CPA funds.
And, and, just a nod, perhaps, I believe, or maybe the clerk can indicate this, I believe the City Council, in its budget in FY19, had some additional funds available for an outside audit. I believe that was $150,000 that we budgeted for that, or thereabouts, and the totals came in at about $120,000, or thereabouts, for easy conversation. So there's excess money within that audit line item that maybe could be used if we need a funding source for this specific item.
That's in the, that's in the resolution.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that those numbers were accurate. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? We have excess money in that line item within our City Council budget?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion to amend has been made and seconded.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call, please. On the amendment.
On the amendment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Panti?
Yes.
And the resolution as amended?
Motion to adopt the resolution as amended would be appropriate?
So moved.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Panti?
Yes. Next order of business.
Would be item number one on the agenda, which is the?
Excuse me, Council President?
Yes, Madam Vice President.
Will we take item 3A out of order as well?
Pardon, 3A?
Yes.
Motion to take items 3A out of order has been made by Counsel Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 3A.
Item 3A is a communication from the mayor and proposed loan order in the amount of $2.1 million for the purchase of snow-removal equipment.
Motion to refer to finance?
Motion. It would probably be ordinance, I would say.
Wouldn't be authorized to be published and referred to.
Motion to refer, motion to get the item to be published and refer to the Committee on Ordinance, correct?
Finance.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Committee on Finance, I'm sorry. It's been a long night.
Motion.
Motion has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kadeem, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number one on the agenda is the mayor's communication in veto of the proposed ordinance limiting the number of marijuana licenses.
This would be, the only action we could take at this point would be to, to lift the item from the table in accordance with our charter, and we will be able to discuss this item at our next regularly-scheduled City Council meeting. So, motion to lift the item from the table would be appropriate?
Motion made.
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Vice President LeBeau. Discussion, hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
To lay the item on the table in accordance with the city charter, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Panti?
Abstain.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on August 12th, voted eight ayes to recommend that the Streetscape Capital Projects be referred to the full council, and that the City Council withdraw authorization for Streetscape's projects and apply funding for specific road repairs with Counselor Kilby absent and not voting.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadeem.
Check it.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor in seat three opposed. The ayes have it.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor requesting ordinance amendments as they relate to positions within the Water Department.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance have been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the Chair of the Board of Election Commissioners and an order clarifying the vote to purchase new voting machines.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the communication has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the annual report of the Community Preservation Committee?
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept the communication and place it on file has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a communication from the Chair of the Board of Park Commissioners requesting renaming of Etna Street Playground.
Motion to refer to Planning Board.
Motion to refer to the Planning Board has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number seven is the, a communication from the city planner regarding the waterfront urban renewal plan and downtown urban renewal plan and the ENF submissions for each.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item eight is the revised draft for the Fall River Task Force for consideration by the council. This item was tabled on August 12th, so they would need a motion to lift the item from the table.
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt and forward to the mayor.
Motion to adopt and forward to the mayor has been made by Counsel Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Kilby. Discussion. Roll call. I just want to let everybody know that I'm not going to be supporting this item specifically. I think this needs to get referred to ordinance. I think a discussion needs to be had in ordinance, and I just will not be supporting sending this to the mayor or the?
Motion to refer to ordinance committee.
Motion to refer to the ordinance committee has been made by Counsel Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on ordinances and legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained. Please our handicap parking.
Second. Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counsel Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Panti?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on ordinances and legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Motion to pass the item through first reading has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on ordinances and legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This relates to city fire alarms.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Motion to pass the item through first reading has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on ordinances and legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be referred to Corporation Council to prepare a proposed ordinance, and this would be to draft an ordinance reducing to reform single-use plastic checkout bags.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council. Motion to refer to Corporation Council would be appropriate?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council is made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, Counselor in seat three, Counsel Kamara.
This is item 14?
This is item 12.
Okay, let me just get caught up here. So this hasn't been, this has not yet been referred to ordinances and legislation?
This is the committee's recommendation, is to refer it to Corporation Council.
I see, okay, so you're looking for Corporation Council input?
Draft the order. You yield?
Well, there were two ordinances that the Health and Environmental Affairs submitted. One was the Attleboro Ordinance, and the other was the Newton Ordinance. So basically, if either of them were agreeable to enact, it would just be a matter of changing from Attleboro to Fall River, or from Newton to Fall River. I mean, to burden the Corporation Council with rewriting ordinances, I thought that was what ordinance committee does, is they submit and rewrite ordinances rather than having the Corporation Council do it.
Well, I think, I think the Corporation Council, it's not uncommon for the Corporation Council to prepare it, go to the ordinance committee if necessary, and then get referred back to full council. I'm sure Corporation Council is here, that he'll note the fact that those two communities have these ordinances, and I'm sure he'll, he'll probably just copy and paste or add his.
Well, actually, 122 communities.
Counselor in seat six, your point of order?
What happened at the committee meeting is there were multiple towns and cities who have already adopted these types of ordinances, these regulations, and what we wanted to do is make sure we get, get it right. So we sent that to Corporation Council for review and to see which ones would fit our community best, and we put back, I guess.
Noted, thank you. Counselor in seat three, you still have a floor.
Yeah, I can understand sending any proposed ordinance to the Corporation Council and to ask that it be checked out for form and language. However, there are 122 different communities in Massachusetts that have ordinances, so I, I find it hard to understand how we would burden the Corporation Council with picking one of those 122 and then sending it back to Corporation Council. I would think he would want some guidance as to, you know, what would we want for a dollar fine for violation, and, you know, what would the kinds of bags be that he would... But as long as the committee is comfortable with sending it to legal counsel, I'm sure legal counsel can do with it as easily as possible. legal counsel can do with it as he chooses. If he wants greater clarification, he can work together with the ordinance committee to get greater clarification.
Councilor in seat, you yield?
I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat five, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Yes, unfortunately, Corporation Council wasn't at the ordinance meeting. However, there was a speaker who was, who had sent, was it four samples to the clerk? I'm trying to remember who was there. Was it Kat that was there?
No, there was a couple that were sent.
It was very specific that they thought would work for us. So 122, it doesn't have to sift through 122 communities. There was four very specific ones.
Just two.
I think there was four that were sent, but...
There's no harm in sending it to our Corporation Council.
Nope. They'll know what to do. I yield.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion before this council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a proposed ordinance eliminating the official city bag and related sections?
Motion to refer the item 13 proposed ordinance on official city bags has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion.
No, no, I'm not a second.
I'm sorry.
Just point of order on this.
I need a second to the... Your point of order, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is basically just cleaning up ordinances to get, to take out the purple bags, the official city bags. We can, we don't have to send it back, we can just adopt it. I mean, we're just trying to clean up the language and just to make sure that everybody's in play. No more purple bags, it's no ordinance for purple bags if we adopt this.
Madam Clerk, do you have the ordinance that would draft it, that we would be able to adopt it right now?
Yes. In order to amend the ordinance, you have to create an ordinance to strike out what is in place, and the council is required, any ordinance must go to the ordinance.
Go to the ordinance.
I thought we could just do it now.
Have to have a meeting on that one, Counselor.
Sorry.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance has not received a second. Is there a...
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item 14 is a proposed ordinance addressing the ordinance that relates to political signs.
Refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas areas of Turner Playground has become overgrown with brush, weeds, and poison ivy, and whereas much of the overgrowth is coming over and through the fence from the railroad tracks that abuts the playground, and whereas residents are concerned that many children are coming into contact with the poison ivy and the views of the Taunton River are obstructed due to all the unsightly growth, now therefore be resolved that the administration, Director of Recreational Facilities, Director of Community Maintenance, and Representatives of Mass Coastal Railroad and South Coast Rail coordinate an effort to clean up and remove the poison ivy and all other overgrowth spreading into the Turner Playground.
So a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Long, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. The sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. I got a call to go down there, and this individual has been living there about 12 years, and he could remember seeing the water and seeing the battleship, and that's all gone. So he's trying to get it cleaned up. But they sent Nancy from the Park Division, sent two people down there, and started cutting the poison ivy, and that didn't work well because they got covered from head to toe, and they didn't, you know, they were sick, they had to take time off. But the only thing they can do there is try to get the other individuals that the Mass Coastal Railroad and the South Coast Rail to work together to push all the brush down. So the only thing I told them, look, I'll put it in, we'll send it to the mayor, and we can see if we can get these things done. Because the kids play in the playground, and they'll get poison ivy as well, so it's a concern for the kids. It's something that the neighbors want so they can see the water, so maybe we can get it cleaned up for them. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas balloon releases are used for celebrations as well as memorials, and whereas although these traditional balloon releases may be beautiful and inspiring, the remains of the balloons and ribbons are harmful to the environment and often cause irreparable damage and/or death to wildlife and marine life, and whereas there are various other alternatives such as bubbles, confetti made from leaves and flowers, tree plantings, and other biodegradable options, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene to discuss banning balloon releases in the city of Fall River.
Motion to adopt? So a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion to adopt is made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Counselor in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
This sort of follows the root of the plastic bag issue. It was in Environmental Affairs, and it's really not an issue that the Environmental Affairs Committee can address. It's an ordinance that would need to be established in order to prohibit the release of plastic balloons. So I think appropriately be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene to discuss banning balloon releases in the city of Fall River. It's not in the jurisdiction of Health and Environmental Affairs. It's an ordinance and legislation that would have to be adopted. And by the way, I think the state did once have an ordinance that was being considered. This may go back, I remember the kids at Talbot School had pursued that. So I really do think it's something that falls under ordinances and legislation. So I would move to amend by striking Health and Environmental Affairs and replacing it with ordinances and legislation.
Motion to amend and replace Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs and replace the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation has been made by Councilor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Be appropriate to adopt as amended.
Move to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Councilor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Items 17 and 18 are citations.
Move adoption of the citations?
Motion to take items 17 and 18 together would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion to take items 17 and 18 has been made by Councilor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the police chiefs report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. The police chief's report has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 20 are approvals, excuse me, applications for auto repair shop licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 21 is an application for the renewal of an auto body shop license. I would just like to bring to the council's attention, this location is at 969 South Main Street. They also have an auto repair shop license, which has a restriction of business hours. The auto repair shop license does not have hours. I don't know if that's an issue for the council, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that the...
Repair shop has hours.
The repair shop has hours, the body shop does not. I'm just bringing it to your attention. It was...
Councilor in seat two?
Have there been complaints from the neighbors with regards to auto repair?
This is the business that has complaints, often has complaints of the...
Regulations?
This is... Vixel Place?
Yeah.
Send that to committee.
This is Main Street Garage?
Yeah.
Councilor in seat two, you have a floor.
Yes.
C three or C two?
C two.
I just want to know if there were complaints.
There haven't been, there are not necessarily complaints about the repair shop, which...
I don't know where it passed. I thought it got resolved, and I haven't heard any complaints lately.
There were some recently, I don't know if they got resolved.
Did I hear a motion to refer to regulations? Motion to refer to... You yield, Counselor?
I do.
Motion to refer to regulations made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims?
Refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Long.